All right, welcome everybody. We unfortunately don't have microphones since we changed our space to accommodate. We're so thrilled to have all of you here. So we'll have to all project our voices this evening. If you come forward and also us in return. So if it sounds like we're shouting, I apologize. Just want to make sure you can hear us. Luckily Nutmeg is able to record using their own microphones, but for your benefit. That's why I feel like I'm yelling right now, but hopefully it doesn't offend anyone. So I would like to call to order the monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education at 7 o'clock. To begin us off, I'd like to do a roll call now. We started during COVID with our Zoom meetings doing that, and I just think it's helpful. Luckily you have the nameplates in front, so you can remember who we are, but I will just go through the rolls so that you know who's here. So I will begin with myself. I'm Deb Schut and I am the chair. Fage Singh.
President Deb.
Jeffrey Fleishman, our secretary.
President, thank you.
Jackie Blaia.
President Deb.
All right, thank you. Lori Young.
President, thank you Deb.
Lisa Semenera.
President, thank you.
Lynn Katz.
President, thank you Deb.
Liz Summercorn.
President, thank you.
And I'm thrilled to announce our new board member, Sarah Thompson.
President, thank you.
Thank you so much. And our administrators, Dr. Bridget Carnemola, our superintendent.
President, thank you.
Jess Jeanini, our assistant superintendent.
President, thank you.
Roberto Medic, our other assistant superintendent.
President, thank you.
Thank you. Susan Russo, business manager.
President, thank you.
And Shirley Moy, our executive assistant to the superintendent and our board clerk.
President, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So if everyone would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I always like to start us off by reading our mission statement. This is truly the reason we're all here doing this work together. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. We have to start this meeting a little differently. We had our former vice chair retire his position, and so we need to have an election for a new vice chair. So I open that up to the board looking for a nomination for a vice chair. Lynn?
I nominate Fage Singh.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Liz. All in favor?
Aye.
Looks unanimous. Congratulations, Fage. You are our new vice chair.
Thank you.
We appreciate your willingness, and we know you're going to be a great fit. So thank you so much for doing that. The next piece, we do have Sarah on our board now, and so she needs to have some committee work assigned. So I figured it would be a good opportunity for us to just make the announcements as to where she would like to go. So no one is changing, other than Sarah joining negotiations, and she'll join policy, which means I will step off of policy and join finance. And that fills all the gaps. So for now, that should take care of everything. So thank you, Sarah, for being willing to do that as well. All right, so next is my favorite part of the meeting, and I believe that's why most of you are here with us tonight. We have our Avon achievers. And this is very exciting because the two women that I'm going to call forward, Ms. Wallace from the middle school, as well as Dr. Lockhart from the high school, just started their roles as principals this past summer and got to engage with all of you students in a way that allowed them to connect with you a little bit differently than they probably would have. So it actually worked out for them to get running. I'm going to have the two ladies come forward and explain to the board, as well as anyone else in attendance, what we are celebrating tonight.
Hello, good evening. Stephanie Lockhart, principal at the high school, as you all know.
Good evening, everyone. Christina Wallace, principal of Avon Middle School. And we're really excited to have brought quite the crowd to you here this evening. So this summer, we spent some time working with a group of students and staff in our respective buildings around the concept of school climate, connectedness, the importance of relationship building amongst peer-to-peer, peer-to-staff, staff-to-community, with the ultimate goal of knowing that every student that feels safe and connected that walks through our doors is a student who's ready to learn and ready to receive the high-quality instruction that we provide in the day-to-day. So we had the honor and privilege of working with those students and staff this summer with our school climate consultants. And we are really excited to have our students and staff here with us this evening, who gave up two beautiful summer days. We did provide them with breakfast and lunch, so we thought that was a fair trade. And they're here with us this evening to be recognized.
Yes, and they received nothing for coming during the summer. No community service hours, no extra credit, no grades. They did it because they wanted to be here, and you'll hear some more from them about why they chose to sign up to come and be with us over the summer.
So without further ado, all of our students and staff in the audience, we will ask you to stand so that we can smile and wave and recognize you. Please stand for the duration, because there are a number of students and staff in both of our buildings. And we'd like to be sure that you have your moment to be recognized and thanked for your work. All right, so starting with Avon Middle School staff, I have Jean Macy, Tiffany Gooding, Mary Dean, David Addy, Gretchen Sanu, Sarah Chaves. I think we both claimed Tassan as being part of our teams, but Tassan is out there.
Should I say?
Yes. And Patrick Linton. And for Avon Middle School students, I have Avir Dutta, Lorenzo Castro Rodriguez, Mehak Sekia, Ramona Robin, Lila Goffier. Bear with me, Cam. Cam Vivekanandan. I'm sorry, I worked on that. Nabil Chesmuala, Violet Chikupko, Ayann Panjani, San Keith Manukanda, Ariz Adam, Suri Singh, Emma Lasota, and Treyus Neer. I'm sorry, Dr. Lockhart. Can we pause for a round of applause for the middle school staff? Now AMS students and staff, bear with us. I am going to ask you to continue to stand for the visual representation of everyone in Avon Public Schools that participated this summer.
And then Ms., if you don't mind, we would love to get a group picture of everyone, so please don't leave too quickly until the end. We'll get a nice shot with the board and...
At the end of the student part.
Yes. Just don't take off right away.
Okay, so our AHS staff that participated, we have Amy Davis, Leanne Di Giuseppe, Chakira Dredi, Jeff Lombardo, Ben Lukowitz, Colin McDermott, Rose Mooning, Kathleen Skelly, and Michelle Zajac. Thank you all. And now for our students, we have quite a few. We have Dia Arunraj, Ardana Chetnani, Vikram Chetnani, Merdula Ganesh, Jackson Green, Marjan Iniat, Maven Jackson Moody, Panya Qatar, Keith Clem, Mark Lee, McKenna Logan, Luisa Mathias, Nita Megrus, Cole Malardo, Brianna Perus, Manasi Pravin Kumar, Seda Reek, Ariella Reynolds, Audra Schwieland, Toby Schwartz, Abiramis Ravell, and Nithin Suresh Kumar. Did I forget anyone? We have everyone. Thank you all so much for being with us.
I think they deserve a round of applause.
All right, thank you for bearing with us.
And so now we have a special treat. You won't hear from us anymore. Now you're actually going to hear from the students. So we have two AMS students and two AHS students who are going to come up and present to you all today. So I'll let Ms. Wallace introduce our AMS students.
Mehak, I saw you over there. Come on up, Mehak.
Ms. Wallace, Dr. Lockhart, if they want to stand near, they can do that too. Whatever they're more comfortable with.
Sure. All right, and Violet?
You all have.
We also have Vikram and Cole from the high school. Come on up. Thank you very much.
Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Violet Chikupko, and I am in eighth grade at AMS.
Hi, my name is Mehak Sekia, and I'm in eighth grade at Avon Middle School.
Hi, everyone. I'm Vikram Chetnani. I'm a junior in eleventh grade here at Avon High School.
And I'm Komo Aron. I'm a senior at Avon High School.
Okay, so as mentioned, we attended the workshop this summer about school climate and restorative practices here in Avon Public Schools. Just to read off our mission statement. Our mission is to inspire each student of joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. So when we're talking about school climate, we're really hitting on the social responsibility part and making sure that students, staff, and administration know how to work together to create a climate that's really beneficial and enriching for all. And also it also helps us people to know how to interact with one another and ultimately just how to help each other the best we can.
So one focus area that our district really wants to focus on is students' personal growth and relationships. We will foster a safe learning community that empowers students to be self-directed, self-regulated, and resilient as they strive to achieve their own personal and academic goals. One goal that we really want to focus on is embracing equity, diversity, and inclusion to build relational... Oh my God.
Capital. Trust.
Capacity.
There we go.
Another goal that we want to is we want to provide students to be... To provide students with leadership opportunities to be... To be... To provide students with leadership opportunities to be... To establish and maintain goals and...
Go ahead.
I'm so sorry.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
Do you see how many people are in this room?
Our second goal that we really want to focus on is providing students with leadership opportunities that will acquire, that will help them acquire and apply their knowledge so they can establish and maintain goals and make responsible decisions.
Excellent.
The reason why, so we're all just going to talk about why we chose to attend this practice. For me personally, it's because I think that the first step to achieving a proper school community where people aren't just learning, but they're also gaining experiences and building relationships, is to have a positive and connected school climate.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess I will. All right, well, honest... There we go. All right, well, I signed up just because the school climate is in the name. It's always been a passion of mine ever since I started coming to school. Well, ever since young, firstly, Deb, on my left ear, and in school I used the FM system carrying aids in class. And ever since young, I've known that everyone needs to treat each other with respect to ultimately excel. In my freshman year of high school, I actually helped to found Avon Voices for Equity Club here at the high school. And that really kind of like kickstarted my work and passion for school climate. So when I saw the workshop opportunity, I just jumped at it, and I don't regret it yet.
All right, so I'm less traditional, I guess. I was, we were at football summer lifting over the summer, obviously. If you'd asked me prior to this, I guess I would say that I didn't really care much about school climate. I just wanted to fly through high school and go through my four years. No one bothers me, I don't bother anyone. I stay with my group of friends. And I make it through senior year this year. And then Dr. DeVivo, the assistant principal, one of the assistant principals out of school, walked in, and she asked, the head coach, Coach Smith, if there's... She was talking to him, and me, the two senior captains there were me and my friend Mason Eggerlin. And Coach Smith asked if either of us want to take this opportunity and do it. And so without knowing when it is, I asked when it was, and he's at the date. And I obviously had nothing going on that summer. And Mason was like, we're going Ocean City, Maryland. I was like, great, Mason. And I already told Coach Smith I wasn't doing anything that day. She was like, yeah, it's a school climate talk for six hours. I was like, I felt bad. I was like, I couldn't make up an excuse. And so I was like, sure, I'll do it. And then later in the day, he kind of laughed at me, and he said... And him and Coach Graves, another parent, another one of the coaches, they started laughing at me. And Coach Smith said, what was you have to bring to the school climate talks? But at the end of the day, so it was, I guess, a pleasant surprise. I wasn't sure that I was going to get that opportunity. I'm glad that Dr. DeVivo walked in and told Coach Smith that, and Coach Smith extended the opportunity to me. I'm still upset that I believed he was going to go, and he didn't. I'm lucky to have the opportunity extending, I guess, the ability to attend that.
So I decided to participate because I knew I could, like, how big of an impact could I make within our school community if I decided to participate? Like, what could I learn that would not only help me in school and help our school community, but bring me beyond that and beyond into my home life and past school, past AMS?
So the reason why, and not just our collective opinions, but the facts, is because it helps build a positive climate. Because when people are more connected, then the mood is better overall. And it's also having a way to repair relationships, which therefore creates a positive impact on school climate when something inevitably damages them. Because instead of focusing on correcting past mistakes, we want to build better relationships in the future and create stronger links between people, whether it's students and staff, or just staff members and other staff members, or students with their own students, students' friends. So the focus is on relationships, connections, and student support, as well as teacher to student support.
I need to go on.
I put the first one, so I can read that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we all went in and put both ones, all read mine. Students and staff should work together to donate, maintain, and welcome in a safe school climate for all. So yeah, I mean, even though there's an age gap between us all, and we all have different experiences, I think that we really need to close that gap. Because like, yeah, I mean, students and teachers are working together in most classes all day. So if we're going to be working with teachers all year round, and even outside of school, like in clubs and sports, then I think we really just need to learn how to get our ideas across and how to really cooperate to make sure everyone's ideas are heard and we produce the best ideas we can.
So I learned that having a positive school climate and building relationships is the key to having a successful school. So when we're building relationships, we can connect deeper into learning, and we can have more relationship with a teacher or with a student. So when we're all learning, we can all connect with each other and make ideas that can build our classroom community.
I was saying that instead of focusing on correcting bad behavior, like I mentioned earlier, you should focus on building and repairing relationships. And actually, this is more for teachers than for me, but it was to teach with, not to for or to not teach. So you have to teach, you have to provide a learning experience with the student. You don't need to teach to. You don't need to be full-on and limited authority. You don't need to teach for someone. You have to work into your own growing. And you can't just not teach them at all, but to teach with them. Because teachers are growing as well as their students. I guess in order to create safe schools, we need to structure students and collaborate adults. Because students, obviously, need a strong student body in order to have a good school and adult as well, because...
So why is this so important? Like, safe schools, both physically, emotionally, and socially for children, are really built by both the adults and the students combined. And I think the school climate talk really gave a platform for students and teachers to really have conversations, I think, that we don't normally have. I mean, I think the opportunity to sit down with someone, a teacher, someone who is obviously above you, and you have to show some respect. I think to be able to tell them what changes you'd like to see in the school and how you think their teaching can be better. And then also communicating with you about how they think students could better perceive the way teachers teach. I think it's a really valuable thing. I think it could help the school more if we had more of those conversations. Because I think, like I said, like students and teachers really build those relationships and lift the school up. But if students and teachers aren't talking, and aren't communicating, you don't understand what's the problem with the school or how teachers could better help students in certain environments. And I think the school climate talk really gave strategies for that, but also, again, built a platform for us to speak to some of the teachers and give some feedback of our own.
Okay, so what comes next? So, I mean, yeah, obviously we had to miss two days of summer just to finish workshop. But I think one thing that we focused on during summer is like, what comes afterward? Like, how do we keep this going forward? One thing I thought of is maybe starting a school climate club? Because we have different clubs here at AHS, and I think in the middle school too, there would be clubs. But yeah, we have clubs for like, you know, all kinds of things. But there really isn't one just for strengthening school climate and just making sure that everyone knows how to work with each other. So that might be something we could look into, just to make sure that people know.
So I think we really need to use what we learned and take it forward and take that into the classrooms. What can we do to connect teachers and students? So working together to focus on building relationships and an exceptional climate by using restorative practices. We focused a lot on restorative practices. So how can we use those restorative practices in our classrooms?
Yeah, then I think we also implement and utilize different strategies that we learned in classrooms. And that's like, they taught us about different activities and circle-based activities that students and teachers can both participate in before the day to really get kids going and set a routine and make people more comfortable to go to school.
I would say getting to know the students and staff members more. Because you get to know people on a surface level, but if you know everyone better than you, it kind of creates more of a sense of community. Because you're not just there for the learning, you're there for the experience as well. But I think that's really important.
So let me just quickly say to Violet, Mehak, Cole, and Vikram, thank you so much for taking the time to memorize your presentation and present that to us. So grateful to everybody that participated this summer. Two whole days of your vacation is huge, and I understand that. But you matter, this work matters, and you recognize that it matters. And I'm so glad you had the opportunity to give your voice to some of the staff and receive that in return, and we're building on that. And your work will not be ignored. We are going to pay attention and keep moving us forward, and we can't do it without you. So thank you for being leaders. Whether you knew it or not, Cole, you are definitely a leader. And I'm grateful that you had a moment where you were invited to participate in something you might not have considered. So maybe what we can do is have you be ambassadors and tell other students, and maybe they'll participate the next time, because they'll realize that it was worth it. So thank you for doing that. We are incredibly grateful, and we will build on this. So you guys have made a difference, and we appreciate it. So thank you. Another round of applause.
I would just like to say that there was one other student from the high school, and I left her name off. Her name was Eknor. Hey, Orissa, can we please give her a round of applause?
So as Ms. Schut said, we'd like to be able to take a picture. I just first wanted to say thank you for doing this. As you know, I had asked for all of you to come if you could. And we started tossing around the idea of what it would look like for you to be able to talk about your work publicly, since you did spend this much time doing it in the summer. And I went through your presentation, and Vikram, you probably saw me in there. I think I was there at the same time you were. Small changes, looks like a period or something I changed. And Cole, I was on the other end of the phone saying to Dr. DeVivo, does he know what he's coming for? She's like, I think so. I was like, all right, well, let's just leave it at that. I hope he comes. So thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone for coming, staff and students alike. And I appreciate the time that you gave up to both come in the summer and to do this here tonight. As you know, it's been a big part of the work. So it's nice to be able to hear it from your perspective. This is different for us tonight, being in this room. But what we're going to try to do is have all of you come around the table behind us, because I think then we'll be able to see all of you for pictures. If your parents want to take pictures, and someone from the district that's out there, so that you have pictures with us being recognized tonight. So I know there's a lot of you, but if we can figure out how to filter around behind us, we'll just pause for a minute to do that, so that you can...
Do you want us standing or sitting? Yes, okay.
Yeah, if we can get in like this, that's good.
Mrs. Bory, are you giving us a countdown? Are you giving us a countdown?
Okay. Are we all looking at one?
Everybody ready? All right, look straight.
Thank you, excellent. We understand that if this was the purpose of coming to our meeting, if you want to, excuse yourselves, we will not be offended. All right, now I'll move us along to the next part of our agenda. All right, I'm looking for approval of the Board of Education regular monthly meeting minutes of August 23, 2022.
So moved.
That was Jackie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
And you posed, and since she passes unanimously, thank you. Our next section is communication from the public. Shirley, do you have anyone on the list?
We do. We have Alex Chen.
Okay, before I have Mr. Chen come forward, I will read our instructions for how communication from the public works. This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and/or concerns with the board. It is not an opportunity for conversation, rather it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. We've already mentioned that you've added your name to the list. Ms. Moy will call you in order. You must state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. In an effort to hear as many of you as we can, we must adhere to this time limit. You can certainly state that you agree or disagree with a previous comment if you prefer to be brief. Brevity will allow for more attendees to be heard. After 15 minutes are up, the board may choose to extend public comment or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not. Please refrain from clapping or cheering. Ms. Moy will be our timekeeper tonight. If you should reach two and a half minutes, she will alert you with a 30-second warning. At the three-minute mark, you'll be alerted again to signal that your time is up. We welcome your engagement and participation. So Mr. Chen, if you'd like to come forward, you can sit at the table there. That way Nutmeg will hear you on their microphone.
Okay, thank you. So Board of Ed, school officials, parents, students.
Alex, please state your address as well.
Alex Chen, address 27 Scarborough Drive. And before I start, I want to say I was really impressed with young people standing here in a big audience, much bigger than this. I'm telling you, I'm about to collapse. So last time for the meeting, I came here. I talked to the people here in the Board of Ed meeting about the students use other students' phone to play video games. When you come to think about it, that doesn't limit to the video games. People can borrow phones from other kids. No matter how tight we parents control our own phone, they can share pornography, or worse, stuff from other kids' phones, without your parents' knowledge, any knowledge. And that's a problem. And that's facilitated by Board of Ed policy, which allows students... And that's a problem, and that's facilitated by Board of Ed policy, which allows students to bring phones to use between classes. And I propose to ban the phone use for the entire school day, that would help them to focus better, get a better performance. Now, I want to say mainly this affect boys. Boys at this age, they go crazy with sex, pornography, okay, or video games. Girls usually don't get affected that much, they're not, they cannot be addicted by these things. But before you pat yourself on the back and celebrate, "Oh, I only have girls," I have news for you. Video game advocating shooting. Phone use, excessive use, creating mental health problems. Pornography enhance violence against women. So, don't be too happy about that, your girls on the other side, on the receiving side of this, all kinds of problems. We're all in this together, school shooting affects everybody. I don't need to tell you this, right? So, uh, so here are the... Whoa, that's great. Here are the issues, so before I get carried away, I want to say, I see kids come to bully my kids, okay? I'm gonna tell your parents if you keep doing that, okay? And no kids should talk to my son, it's my issue, and I'm here to protect you, okay? So, don't talk to my son about this, if you do, I'm gonna talk to your parents, and that's inappropriate. And I want a school to take immediate action. I heard excuses like... Okay?
Sorry, Mr. Chen, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. How many people want phones in their kid's life since school time?
Our next item of information and proposal is our student representative report, which I'm thrilled to see we have our newest junior joining us, Lillian Peng, and Charlotte is back. I don't know, ladies, if you worked it out between the two of you, who would like to speak first, but we're interested in hearing what you've found out.
Yeah, of course, we're both, or I'm excited to be back, and I'm excited to introduce Lillian to this. So, I'm first gonna cover Avon High School. So, fall sports have started to commence, we're almost, most sports were 50% done with their preseason, and I know football won their first game last week, so that was a big deal for all students. Pretty exciting, especially with all of the, you know, blackout, white-out, USA themes everyone's talking about in the hallway, so that's pretty fun. Um, as we saw in the presentation, a lot of new clubs are emerging, like they mentioned trying to start a climate club, there's also been the astronomy club, craft club, improv club, and squash club. So at the beginning of this year, there's been many new opportunities for students to get involved, and they've all been broadcasted to students over the announcements and in pamphlets, just everything. Student Gov, I know, is preparing for our upcoming pep rally and for our homecoming, which is pretty exciting, especially coming out of COVID. I know last year was our first year doing the homecoming dance with like students reparticipating. And class officers have been definitely campaigning recently, there's been a lot of upheaval with like the juniors and the sophomores. Freshmen and seniors are done, and I know that the senior class is brainstorming fundraisers and preparing class t-shirts. So, the debate between the t-shirt designs has been the talk of the week, with people arguing over smiley faces. So, that's been pretty fun. Um, next is AMS, the faculty would like to shout out the PTA for the PTO for their return to school breakfast, and all the students who wrote notes to the first responders. They also had an open house last week, and students participated in Picture Day, which was fun for them. They're also announcing that they are starting their drug education program this month, so I think that they started that in TBS, but they'll start to go into more of an in-depth learning in TBS or AMS. And their PTO has announced the annual one and done fundraiser, where all proceeds will go to students, teachers, administrators, and the link to that is on the website. So, there's pretty excited about that. Uh, my last report is TBS, which celebrated their 20th anniversary, which is pretty exciting. Um, yeah, I know, I remember my, I think it was babysitter or something, went for the first year, and I hadn't, my family had no idea what is new, and now it's 20th anniversary, so that's pretty exciting. Um, their student council has started, so I know they're also in the middle of campaigns. Um, and they also recently enjoyed a winding trails field trip for community building. Fifth graders enjoyed camp reading a lot this September, where they all sat out on front of the school and read their favorite books and enjoyed popsicles on the picnic table, so that was pretty great. And my last piece of information for TBS is about their Gifts of Love program, which is offering backpacks to students and families for going away on the weekends, made with easy-prepared meals for families in need. So, hand it off to Lillian.
All right, so I'm gonna start, I'm Lillian, and I'm going to start off with Royston Elementary School. So, they were able to host their first all-school assembly of the year last week, where they celebrated how smoothly the year has been, and talked about the new focus word, which is hope, what hope looks like and what it sounds like, and how they can model and demonstrate it. They began to brainstorm ideas for a revamp of the inner courtyard, including a creation of a student advisory board in order to learn more about design and architecture. They hosted a set of classroom walkthroughs this past week to observe the great progress the students are making in reading and writing, celebrating the independence and their skill development. They're also allowed to have more collective community things, such as restarting the mystery readers and hosting art appreciation, and there's of course more to come. And then they also made an announcement to remind parents to practice safe driving in the parking lot, so that all students remain safe. And for Pine Grove, last week, they had a curriculum night, which was a great turnout. Parents learned about grade-level curriculum and expectations, as well as classroom routines and how they can best support their children throughout the school year. The superintendent's hours was when they visited classrooms together and observed reading workshops there, and also saw them building their repertoire of strategies and setting personal goals for themselves. As for fun things, they had a summer reading ice cream social, and a new families event at Doms, and a family movie night. This weekend, they were able to put down mulch for a new nature trail outside, and on September 30th, they will be having the first Pine Grove School Community Meeting. That is awesome.
That's it, that's impressive. You started off running, so thank you, ladies, we appreciate your input, and we look forward to seeing you each month, so welcome to Lillian. Next is our financial report, Ms. Russo?
Good evening, everyone. Our report for September encompasses the end of the fiscal year 2122, as well as through August 30th, 2022. A brief summary of where we ended the year, our unaudited fiscal year-end balance was just under $3,000, $2,997.46, so I thank the board for their guidance and their approval of our end-of-year spending in June to allow us to end right where we targeted, almost at zero. Budget 202295 included later in the packet, walks through aligning the expenses from year-to-date for what we spent versus the budget to alignate to zero in all those lines. Our facility use fund, end-of-year balance was $164,396.48. The board had also approved using those funds to refinish the gym floor at the high school, and Royston Gym Floor Refinishing is scheduled to take place this coming summer. Our technology protection plan had an ending balance of just over $27,000, we're using that to purchase the Chromebooks that were damaged or destroyed during the last fiscal year, and we'll be able to purchase those Chromebooks to replace those units, and we place out order in September. In special education, we're able to move six settlements into our escrow account the end of year, totaling a little over $867,000. For the month ending August 30th, 2022, you'll see a large transfer 202314 that aligns all the salaries across the board for administrators, teachers, parent educators, custodians alike, based on what we budgeted at this time last year, as we look forward and those personnel that we actually hired and have in place. Some of the savings were due to resignations, retirements, replacing those teachers or staffs with people lower in the step scale, and we had some administrative openings for the beginning of the year, that'll be filled as of October 3rd. Other expenses, we saw some variances, we talked about a little bit last month at our August meeting, budget transfers 2023001 through 13, taken into account of variances we saw in shipping costs and price increases, again, based on a budget that we crafted fall of last year, and based on the reality of global inflation over the last 12 months. So we are seeing some prices there, but we've been able to find different vendor sources for some of those items to offset the changes. In special education, as we ended the month August 30th, we're still working with our added district schools to obtain those contracts for out-of-place students, and you'll see in the months of September, when we do that financial report, that we've encumbered the majority of those, and transportation also involved with those students, and I'll be able to give you an update at that time.
Excellent, does anyone have any questions for Susan? Thank you for this cheat sheet, we always appreciate it, you do such a nice job with that, thank you. All right, next committee reports, curriculum and professional practices, Jackie?
Uh, we are meeting, our first meeting of the year is October 25th at 6:30 typically, and I think it's gonna be virtual. Yeah, most likely, I guess otherwise we'll tell everybody.
It is nice to have our committee meetings be an option to hold virtually, it's been very helpful to everybody's schedule, so if that tends to be the norm, it's just out of convenience, and then when we are able to meet in person, we can do that as well, so it's an option, so thank you for saying that, Jackie. All right, next finance, Lynn?
Yes, we met on Tuesday, September 20th, with committee members Jeffrey Fleischman and Laura Young. Susan Russo, our business manager, presented the financial summary that you've already seen, and she outlined, well, you'll see in the minutes as well, that we reviewed budget transfers, which we're going to, which we moved to, we voted to move forward to this full board. Bus contract extension and Dever unaudited financials, we've already talked about that, the fee schedule, we're gonna be looking at that tonight, we looked at that at the committee meeting. Then Miles Altimus, who's the Director of Operations, provided an update of the completed capital projects, and shared a draft of our requests for the 2324 year. And that was that, that was the full meeting.
Thank you, Lynn. Lynn is our new Chair of Finance, and we appreciate your attention to detail, so thank you. Negotiations, I am the Chair of that committee, we do not have anything to update at this time. Policy, Laura?
So the policy committee did meet in September, and you'll see under New Business, there are five policies that we will be taking a look at tonight, three of them likely to be asked to be moved up to be acted on, and one probably to be put up for a second read, because it is quite cumbersome, and one to be considered for deletion after the second read of one of the policies. The General Assembly was very, very busy this summer, so there is a tremendous amount of policy work to be caught up with, and therefore, we are going to hold a special Board of Ed meeting in October to create an opportunity to review the additional, quite cumbersome, list that we have to go through. But as always, Dr. Cardinal and the district are following the state statutes already, so that's not a concern, and we will be discussing these under New Business.
And to speak to that policy update that we'll be getting from our legal firm, we still have to choose a date, because unfortunately, the first one we had conflicted with the Jewish holiday, so we'll have to find another one, but hopefully...
Understood.
If not in October, then hopefully early November, we'll figure that out, we'll obviously reach out to the board to make that happen.
Thank you.
Liaison report, Board Representative to Capital Region Education Council, Jackie?
Yes, I did get there, I had sent a link to Bridgette and Deb today, I'm hoping, I feel like a lot of people, including myself, CREG is such a humongous organization that does so many different things, it might be helpful to just look at the first two pages of their website, it really kind of explains in bullet points what they do, how many students they serve, kind of how our suburban districts are relating to them as far as open choice and magnet school population and things like that. We had a really good meeting, they had a really good start, they're all feeling really great about being back, having the kids back. They are facing some staffing challenges, I think including around busing, and also in some of the buildings, they're working through that. I'm serving this year on the policy committee there, and also they have an open choice working group, and we're gonna have the chance to talk to some state people about... One thing I think that I would like to share with them is my concern about the transportation of our open choice students and after school, and how that really impacts their experience in these suburban districts. And if anybody else has anything else they'd like me to share, I'd love to hear from them, whatever, any other board members, I can share that with them when I have a chance to meet with them.
Do you know when that meeting will take place, Jackie?
I don't, I haven't gotten word of that, but the sooner you share it, the sooner I'll write it down and try really hard not to forget exactly what it was.
If you want to let me know, then I can remind the board, and they can reach out to you if they have something prior to... Thank you. All right, next, Board Chair update, we already talked about needing to schedule that policy meeting with our attorney, just to go through all the work that's been done through the state. I do want to recognize that we had another student who was recognized, Rani Kumar, by a Hometown Hero Award, and hopefully we can maybe recognize him at another meeting, and even our own Director of Safety and Security, Mr. Connolly, I think he's here in the background.
I think he's hiding, though.
I think he is hiding, he was recognized as well, so this is our moment to congratulate you and acknowledge that we adore the work that you do, and we know that our students nominated you, which speaks volumes, because you've connected with them, and they truly do feel safe, and that's why we have you with us, so thank you for your time and your energy as well, we appreciate that, it matters. I'm really impressed with how many people came out tonight for, you know, our achievement, I hope that we can fill this room with students a lot more in the future, because that's really what all this work is about, seeing what they're capable of, watching them present and memorize what they were going to tell us about, it's quite impressive. That really speaks to the work that all of our staff are doing to get them to that level, and how invested they are to give up two days of their summer vacation. I know that food certainly helps, but these kids didn't strike me as just coming for food, like they were there to talk, so that was really impressive, and I am grateful that we have the staff that are invested in this work, because having an inviting environment truly does matter to allow kids to feel safe and want to learn more, and I really believe that, and I'm grateful that it seems we're in the same direction, so thank you for that. It's the beginning of the school year, tons of stuff going on, lots of open houses, I think we've checked all the boxes in all five buildings at this point, so now families have been able to come in, getting great feedback about how popular and well they've been run. So again, thank you to our administrators for doing that, and having our staff on hand to answer questions. Just a very busy time here, I don't know that it ever slows down, but you know, it's very busy, and we appreciate you, so thank you very much. So now I'll go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and I'll have Mr. Medick do the hiring report, speak to that as he normally does, I just want to point out two folks that are with us tonight specifically. We have two new assistant principals, as you know, we ran a process over the course of the summer and into September, and interviewed, screened and interviewed a number of people, and we're very pleased to have found two great candidates, one for AMS and one for AHS. I'll start with AMS, Mark, if you would stand, this is Mark Suma, he is the new assistant principal at Avon Middle School. Mark is a former, now just about former, science teacher, and he is coming to... And he is coming to us from West Hartford. Thank you for coming tonight, Mark. And Mark has already been involved at the school also, I believe you were there on open house night, if I remember correctly, and so thank you for making the transition even smoother for the staff and the students, I appreciate that. And many of you already know the other person that I'm going to point out, one of our own high school teachers at Avon High School, Mr. Jamal Lee. Our new assistant principal at Avon High School, thank you so much for being here, you're easier to transition in, you've already been able to attend some of our meetings and so on, and I think as you also know, Mr. Lee is a proud parent in the district, and your children have been very excited, when I've seen them at school the last couple of times, I told them it might be a little bit early, but thank you for coming, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you.
Congratulations to you both, we're thrilled that you're here with us, so happy to have you fill those roles, and I hope you're impressed tonight, Mr. Suma, with the students that you already saw of what you're coming into, so we're thrilled to have you, West Hartford, I'm sure it's similar, but we're thrilled that you joined our team, and Mr. Lee, the only thing I can say is I bet your students are kind of upset they won't have you as a teacher anymore, but they're thrilled to have you in the building, we are absolutely thrilled that this turned out this way, so congratulations to you both.
Thank you.
No, that's fine, Mr. Medick?
Certainly, one, one aspect I'd like to again highlight, if you look at our certified staff hiring, we had our final two hires to begin with us on August 29th, with those two gentlemen that we hired, we were fully staffed in all certified positions that were direct teaching positions in front of students. So that again speaks to the hard work of our building administrators and our team at Central Office to attract, recruit, interview, and onboard. and onboard dozens of employees this summer. So we recognize that hiring is a challenge in many school districts, and we're very proud of the work that we did as a team to ensure that every classroom had a live certified body on the first day of school, and more importantly, great people and wonderful educators. We had a number of non-certified hires in August. We still have several positions available. We, as you know, we have employee staff of over 600 folks in district between certified and non-certified, and we have less than 10 non-certified vacancies right now. So again, a lot of hard work is put into those processes by our building teams. We did have a few resignations already thus far in the school year, and are in process of replacing those individuals as well. So that concludes our hiring report for September. And as the Board knows, these reports get shorter each month until the spring when we have more resignation and hiring.
Thank you, Mr. Medick. On our enrollment report, we are up five students from last month, as you can see, and we're still taking registrations as we continue to see home closings and so on. Some registrations, some withdrawals. Also, students on both ends, but static version of enrollment at present. And we will, again, be talking more about space utilization and enrollment when that study has been completed. So we are working closely with the company at present. Hope to have that, at least by the spring, not sooner. For our strategic plan update tonight, we have put together a full strategic plan update for the Board, which, as you know, we normally do at the beginning of the year. With everything that we had to do in August, just before the school year opened, we did not do this report at that time. We needed, first of all, to wait until we had the SBAK scores from the state so that we could include them in the data that we looked at. And then it takes some time for us behind the scenes also to go through the data, make sense of the data, run it in lots of different ways to make determinations and plan and to start to make decisions. So that's where we have been over the past few weeks amidst the rest of hiring and opening the school districts. So we have, we're going to speak to all four focus areas of the blueprint tonight. I think one of them will be a lot quicker and easier to speak to, which was focus area two, and our students helping us out with that tonight. So I'm going to ask Mr. Janini to start us off on focus area one, which is teaching and learning.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Our conversation tonight is really a timely one, because we're right in the process, working with our teachers and administrators on developing our goal plans for the school year. And so as part of that process, we generally like to do a little bit of reflection, looking back on the previous school year, what we've accomplished together, what we know about our students, and where we want to go as a district, and then really set those priorities for the year. So in thinking back on last year, and I won't read every bullet point to you, don't worry, but we did want to highlight a few things, because what we know about our goals is they build upon one another. And our strategic plan is also a multi-year document. So sometimes you'll see things in the document that have existed there for a couple of years, because, again, we're continuing to build upon that process. And so as you've probably heard in this past year, we spent quite a bit of time on the readers' and writers' workshop model, integrating that into our instructional practices. And that, that really encompassed a lot of our work, K-12. But I did want to specifically mention a couple of points here, one of which is the state has handed down guidance around the science of reading. And what that is, is it's really a series of guidelines for all districts in Connecticut to ensure that we have certain instructional practices in place to be setting up our youngest students for success throughout their career in school as young readers. And so really, our teaching and learning team, led by Jody Krzansky and our curriculum specialists, worked tirelessly beginning in the spring into the summer to go through all of our reading units and really ensure that the science of reading was highlighted in all of our Stage Two documents, which are our teaching plans, if you will, our lesson plans. It was a lot of work, so thank you to Jody and the team for that heavy lift. But we wanted to make sure that we were in line with the science of reading. Another part of that work was really strengthening our core phonemic awareness for programming for our students in K-2. And so PD was provided for our kindergarten and first grade teachers. And then we did purchase some new materials. They're known as decodable texts. For those of us when we were growing up, we probably read the book, The Cat Sat on the Hat. And, you know, what we were looking to do was to provide much more enjoyable texts to our youngest readers. This series is much more engaging, and our teachers are actually even able to do some early comprehension skills with students while still getting at that, that skill of decoding, which is so important for our primary grades. Also included in that is just a lot of work around grammar and punctuation. Yes, it still exists, and we still do focus on it. And so we're continuing to look at ways to strengthen our instruction, really K-12. And you'll see some notes later on when we talk about next steps, about looking for some additional resources in that area. Next up, highlighted on this where, where we've been slide is some work around data teams. Again, you've seen that for a couple of years on our strategic plan. It's because it's a process that we continue to refine and perfect. And our APs worked really closely with our Central Office staff over the last year on that process, looking to make sure we had a solid K-12, you know, process in place with consistent practice in all of our schools. So we thank our CO team and our APs for that. And some of that work was around developing like a year-long scope and sequence, so we could ensure that we have certain times throughout the school year that we're looking at our student data and we're using it to make informed decisions. Last on the list there, we expanded the PSAT to grade nine. And so that's really going to complete a three-year cycle for us. So our ninth graders and 10th graders will take the PSAT, and then culminating for our 11th graders, taking the Connecticut School Day SAT. So we were really happy to be able to provide that experience for our high schoolers. And last but not least is development of the Portrait of the Graduate here in Avon. And I won't speak to that, because Mr. Medick's going to talk a little bit about that later in the presentation. So part of, part of, you know, developing our goals is looking at data. Where, you know, how did our students perform in the previous year? And some of this should be familiar to you as Board members, but just a quick recap. There's several pieces of data that we look at throughout the year. This first one, I don't have any slides for you tonight, but I did want to highlight it. It's all of that formative and summative data that we get from our curriculum-based assessments. So the teachers in the audience would probably tell you, S, you know, Smarter Balanced and CT School Day aside, it's really those assessments that are embedded in our curriculum that they use most to make decisions about their students and how to best help them. And, you know, if we were to go through them, it would be hundreds and hundreds of slides. And of course, it's not reported out in newspapers or on TV, but it's very important data for us. And generally speaking, our students do very well on our curriculum-based assessments. The next bullet point there just speaks to our universal screening tool. We use a product called Ames Web here. And really, the main, you know, the main goal of that is to really help us to catch any students who might be struggling with some of the skills that we know they need to be successful in our curriculum at large. And this slide really just highlights those required annual assessments that all school districts in Connecticut give, generally speaking, in the spring. And so it's the Smarter Balanced Assessment, the Connecticut School Day SAT, which is given to our 11th graders, and then our Science Assessment, which is the NGSS. And again, we take all of this into consideration as we're developing our goals. So these next few slides do highlight some of our actual student data. And what we, you'll see on each page is a column highlighted in yellow. And that really is what I'll speak to for each of them. Some of them are specifically Avon data. And in these next couple of slides that show some of our Ames Web data, it's kind of a culmination of a few categories that our students can fall in. So again, Ames Web is that universal screening tool that we use to identify any students who would potentially be at risk. But it also can tell us how our students are doing in general with these same skills. And so that yellow highlighted column there shows all of our students who fall in the average, above-average, and well above-average range. And if you tally those columns up, you'll see that the vast majority of our students do very well here in Avon on that assessment. Now, again, the point of that assessment is to try to highlight for us any students who might be struggling. So when you see students in the well below or the below category, those are students that we would then meet with our school-based teams. We'd look at their performance and try to determine if there's any additional services that we might need to provide to them to be successful in our school. Generally speaking, they're students we know about, that we are already working with. But, you know, occasionally, it does do its job and help to identify a student who's in need of some additional report. That was reading, and these are our same scores for mathematics. Next up are our Smarter Balanced Assessment results. Traditionally, Avon does very well on the Smarter Balanced Assessment compared to the state average. So you see the column there on the right is the percentage of students at a level three or above. And that center column is how our Avon students fared in grades three through eight. This slide shows same information for the Connecticut School Day SAT and the NGSS, which is the Science Assessment. So these next couple of slides do highlight, you know, occasionally, we like to look at our neighboring communities and see how we stack up. And again, generally speaking, Avon does very well on the state level and compared to our neighbors. So the yellow column highlights Avon compared to our closest neighbors of Canton, Farmington, and Simsbury. And again, this is just an additional piece of data that we'll use as we're developing our plans. And this is the same information for the Connecticut School Day SAT and the NGSS assessment as well. So some, some key takeaways from the performance data, again, Avon students, you know, continue to do extremely well on all of our district-based and the state assessments. A couple of highlights for you, on the Smarter Balanced Assessment, our eighth graders actually placed number one in Dirk B on the ELA assessment, and number two in mathematics. So we were excited to see that. In terms of the Connecticut School Day SAT, we're really highlighting the middle and high school accomplishments here. We, our 11th graders placed 14th out of 192 districts in Connecticut, and are, they also placed eighth out of 192 districts in math. Our scores maintained, you know, a very high-level achievement, even amongst the pandemic, which, you know, we've kind of said we're, we're moving on now, but it was reality. And one of the other things that I think is important to highlight, we were excited to see how our students did, because as, you know, we began the presentation, over the last year and a half or so, we've really been entrenched in kind of overhauling our English and Language Arts instructional model. And if you think about it, it wasn't the best time to be doing that. And so considering all of that and considering how our students did, we were pretty pleased. So what's next? So it's time for math to have a turn. We've paid a lot of attention to ELA for quite a while. And so we've already, last week, had our first meeting of the year with a K-5 math vertical team, which actually has representation from all of our elementary schools, including, and Jacqueline Lawler from the high school as the math 712 coordinator. So we're trying to get a nice broad perspective on that work, and we're excited to, to get started. We're going to continue to use our K-6 curriculum specialists to support our instructional practices. And again, there's that programmatic changes we're looking to continue to make in terms of our K-12 resource for our teachers to utilize with their students. We're also going to kind of take a look this year, I guess you could say, we're, we're pleased with our SBAK scores, but at the same time, we realize that some of the way that the questions are worded, some of the types of performance tasks embedded within them, we believe we can also embed within our own curriculum. Truth be told, Avon doesn't spend a lot of time on test prep, and we're kind of proud of that, because we've all maybe remember being part of districts where you would spend months and months prepping for one assessment, kind of missing out on a positive school experience in many other ways. But that said, we know that some of those questions are worded in a very rigorous way. And if there's an opportunity for us to embed them in our curriculum and for our students to, you know, engage with them and see how they do, we're looking to do that. And just continue to leverage our teams to make data-informed decisions. We're going to continue that data team work this year, continuing to be led by our Assistant Principals to make sure that our instruction and our curriculum are meeting the needs of all of our students. Questions?
Oh, sorry, Jeff.
Just a general question. It's a question I've asked previously, and I understand if we don't have an answer tonight. I'm fine with that. Regarding the curriculum-based assessments, I've asked before regarding what percent of our courses have common-based assessments, particularly at the secondary level. The answer I've received in the past was they're not really formalized at the secondary level. And I want to know, have we come further along with that? We've had a constant conversation over the years about ensuring a common instructional experience for all of our students, regardless of the instructor. So where are we with that process? It sounds like it's there. I'm just curious. Do we have an answer for that? Or I can obviously wait on the specific, because there's so many courses.
Sure. I can start. And I think that's part of that data team work is, and we're also relaunching our Curriculum and Professional Development Council this Thursday. And one of, you know, spoiler alert to anyone in the audience, but one of the things we want to talk about is we have PLC time, right, CLT time. We have data team time. How do we really capitalize on that to make sure that our students are getting a shared experience? And I think part of that are those common assessments. So I think there's more work to be done, but I think that's really where we have to have those conversations and capitalize and leverage our staff to do so.
Great. Thank you.
Jess, will you make sure that everyone knows what CLT and PLC is?
Yes. So professional learning teams is basically, you know, kind of, and we use different ones. So we have CLT. I don't even know if I know the high school acronym for that.
Collaborative Learning Team.
Collaborative Learning Team, yes. So, and that's another part of our conversation, to be honest with you, at CPDC, you know, this Thursday, is do we want to have a common term that we use? Because everybody's phrased it. But the most important thing is that we've got our teachers getting together with administrators, with support staff, talking about their students, talking about instruction, and how we can best help them.
So I raised the question, because I know the secondary is always, I don't want to say it's an issue, but because the diversity of courses that a teacher may teach, and a lot of increased situations of singletons versus at the elementary level, you have much more easier alignment, teachers working together over years. It's a lot easier to establish that. And I think there's such value in, in that data from a teacher standpoint in tracking their progress. I don't want to say no, I need to see everybody's Unit One assessment, you know, at this level. But there's so much value, and I just want to make sure we're continuing that work at that secondary level.
And I agree with Jeff that we've had this conversation, I know, in curriculum for a long time. And also, I think it's come up for, at the Board level before the discussion about also making sure that the, and forgive me, I don't have educational terms. I'm sure there's a better word for grading, probably something fancier. But, you know, that's, all the teachers are kind of have a very similar formula for grading. I assume we're working towards that, or maybe that's not a good idea, but I think we thought it was a good idea when we talked about it last time.
Well, I think in the K-5, K-6, some ways eight realm, we are more standardized in the grading by changing report cards and how we report out needs, expectations, and so forth. At the high school level, and I could speak to this, Jess, because you probably haven't gotten this far into it with the high school yet. That's something that they have been working on, that they continue to work on, as Jess mentioned, getting people together in the acronym of CPDC, Curriculum and Professional Development Council. Those are teachers, administrators from across the district that get together to have these kinds of conversations, look at assessments, look at curriculum, look at programming and teaching strategies, and make some decisions related to that. So what we have seen over time is conversations there with some of the newer courses we've put in, for example, and revisiting with courses that are in existence already. And it's our department coordinators of high school and the middle, who are 712, really, who have done quite a bit of that work. Are we where we would like to be yet? No. But we, that is something we have been working toward. It's actually something that was a little more to the front of the burner in about February of 2020. So we're-
That's when I remember having those big discussions in person.
We've still moved along on it, but we have not closed the circle for all of the courses, Jeff.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate the update.
Any other Board members? Thank you, Jess.
So I have to- So Tassan, I think you've all met Mr. Haynes, TJ, as we call him, I call him. I think someone's called him.
I don't know where we're going.
So TJ and I wanted to talk about this together because, as you know, prior to his time with us, when Dr. O'Neill was here and trying to manage the internship program, and through the pandemic, after the pandemic, I and several others were pitching in, in doing a lot more of this on-the-ground level work related to focus area too, particularly in helping to design surveys and just soup to nuts what we were doing. So I thought it might be better for me to address the historical piece of it and bring that data to you. That's prior to Tassan's time, because I could probably answer questions better about that than he might be able to, although he's been right in it with me since he started in July. So you heard the students talk quite about this, quite a bit about this tonight. I don't need to highlight a lot of things on this slide, actually, because this is everything that they talked about tonight and that you've seen in previous updates. This is, these are just some highlights of what we've done as a school district thus far over about the past, just a little over a year, some of these that we've fully gotten done. And as you know, we did a climate and connectedness survey this spring. We had done one the previous fall. We had done one the spring before that, but the previous fall, so that would be fall of '21. The questions had some of these same questions on them that are directly related to school climate and connectedness, but they also had questions related to the pandemic, to people's feelings about school related to that, to social, emotional needs that might need to be met while students were out of school and remote learning and so on. And so it was a combination of the kinds of questions that were asked. They weren't the typical school climate and connectedness surveys. And I say typical because school districts in Connecticut have been required to do this for years. I think maybe back even to 2010, if I remember correctly, somewhere around then. The state started requiring that these surveys be conducted, that certain questions are asked that can gauge how safe students feel at school and how connected they are at school. So this survey is in line with that typical standard survey that would be given in any other year. Of course, we made sure that it was applicable to current. So we gave three to 12th graders the survey. The majority of, and you can probably see how this is in front of you, the majority of K-8, I'm sorry, three to eight, did it at a time during school. As you can see, the high school with a 14% response of students is not, obviously, what we would have liked to have seen, but it was a difficult time of year, not just because it was the end and we were, it was sent out just before finals, I believe. And we were working through the transition of Mr. Rankowitz out and new principal hiring and so on. So there were some reminders sent out to students, teachers were asked, so on and so forth. This is what it is, there's 14% of the students that responded at the high school. What I will say about that is, however, that when we went through the data, and I've worked and reworked this data mostly by hand, just going through different pieces, trying to look for different trends, even with that many students completing it at the high school, the trends of the answers are still consistent with the rest of the district. They're not off very much on any given question. Some places, they're a little bit higher of a favorable response by a couple of points, and some places, they're, I think max that I saw difference is a five-point plus or minus, whether it's favorable or unfavorable response. That said, if you remember, we also had the focus groups. So I think when you put together the survey data that students completed on the computer with the fact that over 100 students were able to sit and talk about their experiences at the high school and at the middle school and give their feedback, we put both of those things together and see consistent data, I think it's still data to work with. Now hopefully, next year, we will have better response on the high school survey. I say next year, I mean calendar year, because we will be doing this survey again in May. So thousands, about 100 students, as I said, in individual discussions, and we had a cross-section of all students that participated in that. Just as a reminder, if you're a new board member and you may not have seen what went out, we were a lot like the group you saw here tonight. We aimed those focus group discussions for students that represented all different clubs, classes, grades, choice students, Avon resident students. We tried to make sure that we had a good cross-section of students to be able to share their experiences so that we weren't getting feedback from any one particular group more than another.
So Bridget, that, those small group meetings are integrated into, you kind of, you put them together with the survey data, basically?
So these are the actual questions from the survey. So when you see these, this is only survey. But from the qualitative data standpoint, and that's why you'll see when I get to those slides, I called it the qualitative data. We went through and coded the data from the conversations because they were kept confidential with the students. And pieces of that were summarized and turned over to me and to Tassan without student names attached and so on, you know, what comments came from what group. And so we checked off the number of times we heard the same thing over and over. And that, those are the ones that you'll see here. Of course, there's, there's some outliers of very positive and, and, well, actually, there's not many outliers of negative. If it's negative, you see it here. But we didn't, we didn't record on this presentation every single student-type response. So one of the main questions that we care about in terms of data is this one, the first one, I feel I belong at my school, and as you can see across the district. And yes, this number was consistent with AHS also. 96.1% said they very much or somewhat feel they belong at their school. I think it's difficult to split hairs on these categories of very much and somewhat, to be honest with you, or very little, or not at all. I mean, not at all is different than very little. This is the way that the formatting has been collected also by the state for years. So again, another good reason why we do the focus groups and are able to drill down a little bit with more information. But I won't read all of that to you, I know you've seen it before today. I don't want to keep going, I'll pause it every, in case you have another question about what's in front of you. Lynn?
I know everybody does it in May and June, but is there a reason for that? Does the state insist, or could, could this survey be done earlier in the year and then teachers would have more time to disaggregate it?
We have done it at the beginning of the last three years. We didn't do it again this year because we had just done it in May. So we could have done it again right now, yes, but.
Well, not, I mean, just even in the middle of the year.
Yes, and we've done that too. Yes, we can do it, there's no rule, you just have to have it done during the course of the school year. And so in the last few years, to your point, I think, we were looking to get a baseline feedback from students and then an end-of-the-year feedback from students. I will say that even doing it at different times of the year, the most participation we've seen from students is just under 30% and less than that at the high school. I have friends at school, so obviously, we're looking to make sure that students feel comfortable and have peer groups. I feel other students treat me kindly and with respect. Where you see that I've put a slash here, it means it was asked differently, depending on the grade level. So we are not going to ask a three, third grader, fourth grader, if they get treated with respect, and they may not be sure what that means, so it's kindly when we're talking about the elementary students. And when we get up to fifth grade through 12th, we change it to respect. There was an open box after this question. And after these next two questions, where if they wanted to expand on anything, they could. So in addition to the focus groups, the quantitative data that this, these percentages based on, they were able to speak about whatever it is that they wanted to say about those things. So many of the students did take the opportunity to put something in the box. It said they didn't have to, and most, most of their responses were no. Some version, I know this is going to sound crazy, but some version of, I like school. Thank you, I don't have anything else to say. We were a little bit surprised too. Obviously, neither of my daughters were taking the survey. She saw my older, my high schooler saw me working on this last week and said, wow. What do you do differently? So again, you'll see in the summary, the vast majority of our students did say that they liked school, they felt connected. I will say that still, when we see 89.5%, we still see room for improvement. So what else did we see in those boxes that they wrote in about, you know, specific items or specific feelings? You'll see that as we go through on the qualitative side because we included that data there with focus groups. So I feel comfortable sharing my thoughts and ideas at school. This was important to us because, again, like you've heard the students say tonight, if they are truly engaged and connected with their learning, then we also know that they, they feel they have a safe space to have a discussion. And this has been a question a lot of times over the years. And a more difficult question in the last few years for us to wrestle with as we have worked quite a bit on facilitating dialogues with students in the upper grade levels. Because, you see, when we're talking about in social studies, for example, current events and some of the politically charged sorts of topics that our 17, 18-year-old students at least will wrestle with, we want to make sure that no matter what their viewpoint is, if they're supporting their viewpoint with research and facts and so on, like we want everyone to do when they're participating in dialogues at the high school and in classes, that they feel safe to be heard. And so that's a number that I think most school districts would look at and say, wow, that's fantastic. It's one of our lower ones, and so you'll see that's one of the things that we talk about as we move on.
I'll just say that's the number that concerns me the most because, to your point, anecdotally, that's what we hear, right, on various issues. And we talk about creating a safe space, and to me, this is the most glaring contradiction to that, those conversations. And I question, I wonder, that's what they tell me to say. I wonder if we probe more with the students, do they feel that they don't feel comfortable sharing their ideas and thoughts with their peers or their faculty? And I wonder if there's a deeper conversation that could be explored at some point in terms of where they get that number from, where that uncomfortability is coming from.
So what, that's a good, I would have said that, so I'm glad you asked the question. The data that we collected through the focus groups and through the write-in boxes, it was more about peers than it was about faculty. Very, very few.
And I'm not trying to make any accusation, but I think it's a.
We were looking through for the, for the same thing, because you can also see, I feel adults treat me kindly and with respect, look at the numbers. So we have almost 97% of students who say yes to that, whereas we're below 90 on the other students. So I think those two pieces of data are correlated, and we see it in the responses, the write-in responses.
So then the idea is that the larger conversation needs to be held with the student body in terms of how do we foster those types of responsible conversations and mutual respect for difference of opinion?
That's one of the things we talk about in the next steps, continue that work. I thought I saw someone else's hand. I feel I can get help from a school counselor, social worker, psychologist. 84.6 said very much or somewhat, that's also lower than we would like to see. We want students to know that those supports are here for them. We've been working at that for years, as you know. I think by the end of this year, we will see that number go up because of some of the things we've done already even in this school year, but that you saw back on the previous slide, having information sessions for students. I was here and saw those at AHS, for example, for all grade levels. I've saw the same happening down, continuing at AMS. So it's just a way of making sure that students understand what those people are here to do and who they are and where to find them, and that they have open access to counselors, school psychologists, and school social workers.
Sorry to jump in again.
No problem.
Does this include discussion about the stigma about receiving that type of support? I wonder if there's a social stigma with, oh, you're having a meeting with this person. That's the psychologist, you know, like, is that part of the conversation? Or are we finding ways to include these staff members into just regular day activities so they're not perceived as, in many cases, mental health support, but just no different than the history teacher?
I think that we actually do a very good job of that in Avon. We saw at least one of those support people here tonight because they participated in the training during the summer with kids, for example. Many times, they are helping to do engagement plans, and they're meeting parents, and they're, they're out and about, and they're on field trips. They are so, to the extent that they can be integrated like the rest of the faculty and staff, I think they are. And I say to the extent that they can be because the reality of the situation is also that they have a caseload of students that they're meeting with that they need to meet their needs. So it's a balance there. I didn't see, I could imagine, Jeff, that that would be a reasonable thing to assume for any of us as educators or parents, but I didn't see any of that in the responses, for what that's worth then.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
So here are the themes that we heard from the survey and the focus groups together on the write-in. So this is kind of the big, big picture as we put it together in this fashion. So our teachers are seen as knowledgeable, approachable, provide students with a sense of belonging. Of course, we're happy to see that. Most students report having close friendships with other students and positive relationships. And we saw this a lot, this is again, like, as I said, a lot of comments about how much they love school, great pride in school, and generally speaking, they enjoy coming. I wish I could just turn it off right there and say, that is fantastic. But some of the other things that we saw, some students of color. And I'm saying some because I know from the surveys and from the focus groups, this isn't, it's not a broad brush statement any more than any of the rest of this is. These are general statements. Some students of color and are LGBTQ plus students feel less connection to school than their counterparts. We have heard from the students directly in the surveys to some degree, and a little more from the students in the focus groups, that there's more common than we would like, because we'd like it to not be common at all, inappropriate language being used like indirectly and or casually by students in conversations. Not, in other words, I use the word casually, I was trying to figure out how to categorize this because we didn't see, we didn't see comments but for a handful. A handful's too many. But for a handful, we didn't see comments about targeted statements to someone. You know, I don't, I don't like you because, or you're such and such, or so and so. We didn't see much of that. And what we did see of that was mostly related, was mostly related to us by Asian students. Asian students. Students who had either written in their comments and spoke specifically to that and/or when, if they answered what their race was, because that was another interesting thing. Nearly a third of the students who took the survey declined to answer what race they were, which they can do, but putting the data together then is more difficult to corroborate some statements based on what it might be the issue is, which is why the focus groups and the write-ins help us in, help us there. So I would say the handful of instances that we heard about where there might have been more targeted language used toward a student or a situation, it was our Asian students reporting that to us. Does that mean it never happens anywhere else? No, but that's what we saw in the survey. And we heard that besides that, there are other words that are thrown around sometimes a little more than we'd like to see them.
Is that a shock to us that that, that group, that segment of our population was reporting that happen? Do, has it been the impression that that has been an ongoing issue and hasn't been reported, or?
I will say that we've dealt with, you know, and I don't want to say exact numbers because there haven't been that many that we, that the administrators have dealt with. I think I'm aware of most, if not all of them, one juncture or another. I think we have dealt with a few instances of Asian students and/or their parents reporting that perhaps a slur was used when students were talking to each other or one used about another. Sometimes they're with younger students. they're with younger students. A lot of the times, they've been with younger students that our response many times has been sitting with the students and going through, asking if they really knew what they were saying and why. And with the younger students, the majority of the time, the answers to that have been no. They're repeating something that they've heard because I think it has shock value, and they were trying to upset someone. So, as you'll see, those are some of the takeaways too about how do we continue to educate students around appropriate language and what types of things might be offensive to different parts of the population that we would want you to certainly not use in a school setting, in a professional setting. Part of what we do is get students ready to go out into the world, and unfortunately, I will say, and I've had this conversation with a number of parents over the last couple of years too, we see these types of things start younger and younger. I don't think that four years ago, I would have had any phone calls from principals, I can't remember having any as a matter of fact, where, you know, a third or a fourth grader used a slur like that, like some of what I heard about Asian students. But I think, again, we're living in a different time with everything just kind of being a little bit more charged politically, and we just made it through the pandemic. So, you can imagine at least what some of the comments in the boxes were related to Asian students, for example. You know, so-and-so said that he wishes I'd go home because people like me brought COVID here. Those were some of the things that we heard and saw from students. There is a use of, and I think we'll all know what I'm saying without spelling out words, there is a casual use of the N-word by students at, more at the high school, I would say, than at the other grade levels. We heard a little bit of that also from the middle school. Again, I saw in the data and it was reported back to us from the independent folks that did the focus groups, that they weren't hearing from students and we weren't hearing from students, that it was charged and targeted language at people, but more that it was just used in casual ways, and it's offensive, no matter how it's used, to many people. There are some of our students who, you know, would say to us, "Well, you know, this is my friend, and we're just, you know, playing around," and sometimes that's the kind of language used, you know, when we're hanging out. And we've heard conversations like that, and our administrators have dealt with conversations like that. And our response for that is, that's not tolerated in a professional setting or in a school setting. So, if you are out at a mall and you're speaking that way to each other, and you're both comfortable with, you know, using that word, that's not school. And we should have a conversation about not using it at all. But, this is hard data to report out on, as you can imagine, but I want to make sure that you understand what it is that we heard and saw because it frames some of what we're working harder on.
The reason I raised it though is I think as a board, we've heard from various other groups within the high school. You know, last spring, we had trans students address the board and their concerns. We've had concerns raised regarding African-American students and their feelings of connectivity and so forth. And we haven't heard from our Asian students, which represent twenty percent of our student population, and I was just wondering, are we missing something, right? Is there more going on than what we're seeing? And I also wonder if there's a, if there may be other factors why we're not hearing these concerns that maybe as a district, we need to examine more closely to ensure that our students aren't having these experiences.
I can't say that, none of us can say that...
And I don't expect an answer on this. I think I'm more wondering out loud that it's alarming to me if there's a, such a sizable segment of our student population that is feeling this and we're not fully aware, that we only get told by an anonymous survey.
So, I can't speak to how, you're right, I can't speak to how large it is. Could it be larger than what was reported? I think that's what you're asking me. Yes, anything could be larger than what was reported. Some kids didn't do the survey. Some did the survey and I'm sure went through and checked boxes and said, "Let's get out to recess," or to lunch, or what have you, because a survey's a survey, and you're not always going to get, you know, exact data. But when you get enough of it, that it's reliable in the trends, you know, something. So, what I'm saying to you is that from the Asian perspective of the write-ins and the focus groups, that's the place that we saw the more targeted, and it's still a handful of students that reported it. So, it's not that a large segment reported.
It's a sample.
It's just that, to your point, it's twenty percent of the students around that identify as Asian. I don't know how many, there weren't twenty percent that identified as Asian taking the survey. I'd have to look at it. I don't remember off the top of my head right now. But I thought it was worth mentioning because we did see it as something that was more targeted than some of the other, as I'm saying, quote, casual use. Does that also, I want to be clear, does that mean that no one ever used a slur again toward another student in a way that wasn't casual? I can't say that. What I'm reporting on the data that we're seeing from the survey, and it wasn't something that was talked about by students in the survey or in the focus groups. We went through that, did not see that. So, when we're talking about, to be specific, as I said, the use of the N-word or other racial-type slurs, slurs related to LGBTQ plus students, those are the types of things we heard that might get said between students and not directed at others, that we know we need to focus on because we have students also telling us that it makes them uncomfortable, whether it's directed at them or has anything to do with them or not, personally, I mean. Did I miss anything there? So, I could do this, but if you don't have any other questions for me, this is where I'm going to turn it to Tassan because this is a lot of the work that, you know, we've been doing. And as you can see, I took the harder, you're welcome. I think it would have been easier for me to give that part to you, actually. Actually, that was part. So, Tassan's going to talk a little bit about what we're doing next about this, and also when we go into focus area three, you see one of the first things we're talking about is our internship program, which we've been doing quite a bit with between...
So, I'll be back up here again.
So, you'll be back.
All right. So, again, just some key takeaways. The vast majority of our students do feel a sense of connection to school, the vast majority. They do feel, for the most part, that they are treated with kindness and respect. There is an adult that can, you know, spend some time with them, help them out. Peer issues are not the vast majority of our students experience, and most of our students do find school, you know, pretty enjoyable. But with that being said, there's still room for improvement, sort of like we were talking about earlier. If there's even ten percent, five percent of our students that feel negatively about school or don't, lack of connection, that's an area that we need to make sure that we try to address with intention. Students receiving social and emotional support, that is one area that we are working on. We're going to talk about that on the next slide. And again, making sure that students feel that sense of connection, no matter who they are, no matter what their background. So, we saw our kids earlier, you know, demonstrate a sense of connection by working on the server, right? So, how can we replicate ways to make students feel more inclusive in school? So, what's next? So, here's where I sort of work in conjunction and partnership with a lot of people to try to, you know, advance this work forward. So, there's a lot of work that's being done with CREG, partnering with CREG to design trainings for teachers, because ultimately, you want to make sure that we build capacity. In order to have a positive classroom environment, we need to make sure that the teachers, you know, usher that in for all kids, and that we minimize the number of kids that are being left behind. So, you bring up language towards other students. We're planning some parallel learning so that would involve both teachers and students to help kind of drive this work and to build the capacity of those people, so that way in their respective buildings, they can sort of train other people and sort of be a resource in the building. So, that's one of the trainings that we're currently working on building. We're like ninety-five percent done with this one, so I can almost check that off the list. We're partnering with CREG with Gloria Mingwell, lovely woman. I've worked with her quite a bit so far. And we're going to be facilitating, you know, respectful dialogue conversations and really focusing in hard on the idea of, what do you do if someone says something that affects you? How do you respond to that? Or conversely, for a teacher, if there's something that's being said in a classroom, how do you respond in real time to make it a teachable moment rather than say nothing? So, part of that training, and one of the themes of that training is saying nothing is doing a lot that could be potentially harmful for kids. So, we really want to make sure that we really address that space because ultimately, there are still teachers who would have questions. Well, all right, I've had this great training, you know, I feel prepared, but in reality, if something happens, how do I respond to this particular scenario? So, working through that with teachers to make sure that they have better sense of comfort in order to create those safe spaces for kids. And another next step is something that I'm really proud that we're doing this year. So, I've partnered with the leadership team at TBS, so shout out to all of you, on developing an engagement plan for all of our choice students and their families. When I first started in this role, I walked around, I kind of saw the buildings, I met with all the building leaders, and one of the recurring themes that came up was the fact that, how do we better engage our choice families? So, part of this particular plan, we're organizing a series of three events throughout the year where we can engage with those families specifically so to learn what their needs are, because we can make decisions all day long as educators about what's best for somebody else. But it makes much more sense to involve those people when we're making those decisions and getting their input. So, the first two meetings of the year that we're planning are going to be via Zoom because initially, this plan was originally being developed for one school that I would want to replicate for other schools. But then thinking about parents who have kids in multiple schools, that could be a logistical nightmare. So, in order to facilitate getting all the parents in the district, possibly in one place, that takes a little bit more work. Our plan is not to house any meetings in Avon. We want to actually go to Hartford. So, I'm working in conjunction with CREG on moving this event to Hartford. So, the first two will be via Zoom this year, and then the very last one, which we're scheduling in May, will be in Hartford. So, then moving forward, that'd give us, them more than enough time to be able to secure a location, so that way we can actually house these and have these in person, you know, bar and inclement weather. So, that's just one plan that we're having, that I think is really going to make a sound difference for those families, because let's be honest, parents who live quite a bit away, there is going to be a natural lack of connection to the district. So, that requires that it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we go out and we meet them where they are, and that we are showing intention when we are engaging them. So, again, with these meetings that we're planning, it's to elicit information from parents. It's to provide parents with some information that they may have missed in, you know, the communications that we send out. And it provides an open forum for us to learn how to respond to their needs. And as the year changes and as the year progresses, we know needs change. Kids, their needs change, so parents will be able to articulate to us, "Well, my child's going through X now. What can we do to address that?" And we also know that parents might not always feel as comfortable reaching out to express a concern. So, we want to be able to provide them with that forum as well. So, that's the next steps for that. There's more.
I have a question.
Oh, sure. Sorry.
So, was there a reasoning behind choosing Thompson Brook as the target age group for doing this, or was it, there was, so it just happened?
So, it was more of a natural plan that sort of came out of conversations that I was having with building leadership. And when we housed CREG coming in and having a conversation with the leadership team, their support team, the idea came up. So, I said, "Okay, well, this is a really great first step in terms of engagement for those families." But then as naturally, you know, I'm thinking, "Well, we got to expand this further." So, originally, the plan was just going to be for TBS, but then in talking about it, I was like, "No, we have to open this for everybody." The original plan would have been replicated with multiple buildings, but again, logistically, and thinking about the convenience of parents, we wanted to make sure we just did it at one time.
So, I just want to add in some perspective too that I don't think Tassan would have yet. We have engagement plans already in place for the district, obviously, that needed to be more robust for choice families. But from a transition planning and family engagement perspective, Thompson Brook had been on the forefront, I would say, of that over the last, I don't know how many years, because that's the first time the students are all getting together in one building. And so, there were already structures in place at Thompson Brook that the administrators and the support staff at Thompson Brook had been utilizing that they were able to talk about and replicating in some ways for this, the things they did for both new students into the district, because that tends to be a year that we have an influx of students too in fifth grade, and also working together with students and families to build connections between students who've already spent possibly more than five years in school together and now are mixed together in classes. So, you may not even have realized that as you got there and had those conversations with Thompson Brook, but that's been a longstanding piece of engagement there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on that before I...
All right. So, and we'll cover this when we get into focus area three, but myself, Maria Mascoli, we are actively working to increase our internship offerings to include businesses in Hartford. We know that there's a barrier with our Hartford students accessing the opportunities that many of our students have in Avon, because most of our internships are housed primarily in Avon or neighboring towns. So, we have really been working hard with trying to secure contacts and business opportunities for students to engage in the Hartford area, so that way it would not be an issue with transportation. There's guidance being developed currently for our LGBTQ plus students, and this is guidance that's going to, one, help support them and also support teachers. So, I've designed a professional development that I can turnkey for eighty school building, just to kind of give a sense of, what's the law, right? How does that connect to Title Nine? How does that connect to, you know, our district goals and our values as a district? And who our LGBTQ plus kids are and why there is a need for support? And that was actually bore out in the survey data as well, the qualitative data and the actual survey data that our LGBTQ plus students didn't necessarily feel as connected. So, really guiding the district staff in that regard, but also as a part of the guidance, developing a protocol for if a student does identify, having routine check-ins with those students with someone who's a social-emotional worker, because we know based on data and based on the trajectory of usually kids traversing school, their needs will change throughout the course of the year. And if you have a student that's questioning who their identity, their sexual identity, having supports is probably one of the most important things that we can have for those students. And oftentimes, they might be reticent to seek out the help, so having a trusted individual appointed to check in routinely, it could be a two-minute check-in, where it's not necessarily taken away from academic time, but just to check in and that student can learn, "No matter what, I have support from this particular individual." So, when things do arise, there'll be a better sense of comfort with actually relaying that information, so that way we can address it, because we don't want to go through the entirety of the year, then at the back end, have the students take a survey, and then they tell us, "Oh, by the way, I didn't feel supported." We want to be able to be proactive and address that on the forehead. And then AMS and AMS, AHS and AMS, with assemblies, flex time, advisory periods, that's also an area where we can do community building, and we can reiterate where those supports are in those schools. So, I think that was it for me. Yes?
Quick question, backing up just a little bit. Has there been any discussion around the correlation between the lower AHS response and the fact that students are feeling not as comfortable sharing their thoughts and ideas? I just noticed that there's room for improvement. I just noticed that there's room for improvement there, and I know it's an anonymous survey, but it kind of jumped out to me that maybe there's some correlation there.
So what I'll say is, one of the trainings that we're working to develop for our staff is to really work on creating the conditions in the classroom so people can feel more academically safe to share their ideas. So a part of the PD, and I guess I'm not previewing this for most people, they're all at this point. They'll see that as a part of the PD, they can walk away with actual concrete tips on what they can do in the classroom to help facilitate a more safe environment. As an example, grounding opinions with research. That's just one idea, right? Because with students all day, they are very opinionated. But if it's not necessarily grounded in research, it could kind of go left. And we don't want that, right? So building the capacity of the classroom teacher to go in and be able to facilitate these conversations. As an example, I went into one of the classrooms at the high school. One of the teachers asked me to come in because they were having this, a conversation that possibly could be sensitive. And I was able to go in, support the teacher, but also engage with the kids during that conversation. So not only do teachers know that they have a resource when these things come up, I'm also willing to go in and help in that regard.
I want to circle back, Sarah, because I think that's a good question, but from a different lens. So I can see how that could be a possibility. I'm not saying it's not a possibility, anything is possible, that maybe some students didn't complete the survey because they didn't feel comfortable completing the survey. I think that would happen anytime. But in terms of this data that we collected, I don't think that's the case based on what we saw. Because what we did see were students who had no problem speaking to adults in person. So they could have done a survey anonymously and spoke to adults in person, or either one. And students were told about the consultants coming in to work with them and allowed to sign up, to meet with them in groups, to meet with them one-on-one. Many chose to sign up in the groups. I think we only had a handful here at the high school, maybe five or six, that met one-on-one. And they were very honest and transparent with their feelings. And for the most part, you know, what I have found at least as an educator and a high school educator before this, when you actually speak to the kids and let them know that you're invested and want to know what they have to say, they will say it. So I think it's just an unfortunate situation when the survey was put out here at the high school. To be honest, I didn't expect it to, I was not sure we were going to get as many responses as we even had, given the timing of the survey and how it was sent out here. And there were some reminders sent out. We actually even had some students do the survey within the first week of school. So there were a few that said, oh, you know, I wanted to do this, I never did it. And we actually hadn't closed it, so we left it open right up until I ran this data.
Any other questions for me? All right. I'll be back up in a minute.
Thank you.
Focus area three.
Yeah, sorry. Might as well just stay here. Because this would be quick. So the communication partnerships, I think you've heard a lot about that already tonight, because all of this has to do with how we communicate and how we try to have two-way communication between students and those of us who work in the district, and also between parents and those of us who work in the district in a cyclical fashion with families and students. So we have worked hard at that over the last few years. As you know, unfortunately, many of the conversations that we've had over the last few years were about pandemic and pandemic-related regulations or precautions. So many communications that went out were one way to let people know what we had to do or the like. But we have been working at various ways to change that. And the internship program, and this actually is you, Tassan, I didn't even talk about this.
So I could talk about it.
Because the next part, the part I was going to speak about.
All right. So when I started July 1, one of the first things that I wanted to do was to look at what we had in place, right? Because I'm coming in from a different district. And, you got to go back one slide. All right. So the first thing I did was I revamped the website for the internship program. I wanted to make sure that anyone who went to the website wasn't able to see the updates and get a better sense of where we are, who we are, and that we're ready to go back into business. Unfortunately, as you all know, as a result of the pandemic, we lost a lot of our community partners. No one really wanted to kind of host our students. So after revamping promotional materials and the website, we have, right now, over 40 confirmed previous partnerships and new partnerships. One of the partnerships that we were able to gain this year is in Hartford, is the Chrysalis Center. It's a nonprofit, wonderful organization, so we'll be working with them. And we have one of our students who is doing her internship right now remotely with a company called Ashuran in India. It's a tech company. So we are really, really trying to expand our offerings, you know. A letter went out to parents asking if they would be interested in joining our team in terms of potential opportunities, and one definitely took us up on our offer, reached out to some people that they knew, and we were able to secure that internship in India. So this is exactly what we are trying to do. And I think right now, we are off to a really, really positive start with the program. You got a question?
You have 40 now. What is your goal ultimately?
Well, our ultimate goal, so this year, we're looking at it as a foundation year, right? Because after you've lost partners due to a pandemic, it's a slow start to, you know, get people comfortable having students again. So every quarter, what we're going to do is we're going to assess where we are and set micro-goals that way. I don't want to say that we're going to get 100 partnerships, you know, by the end of the year. I want to work at it, so that way we secure the partnerships that could be a lasting partnership as well.
You've got more than 40 kids who want this, right?
Yes. So there's interest now, there's growing interest, I should say. So currently, we're in the middle of processing about 10 students to try to secure their internships. One of the issues that we're encountering is, one, matching a student to the respective confirmed business. So if there's not a confirmed business, we've tried to do the legwork to really try to secure that for that student. So this year is really, again, more of a foundational year with rebuilding and reintroducing ourselves to partners. And then, like I said, trying to gain the partnerships that are outside of Avon. So there's lots of meetings, there's lots of phone calls, there's lots of follow-up phone calls. Maria Mascoli, she's been amazing with her outreach. I met with her today, and she was able to kind of show me the binder that she keeps, she's very methodic, of all the outreach that she's had with different companies of different sectors. So we're really just trying to secure and build and get the word out there that we're back in business.
I think it's an important piece to the answer to your question, Lynn, that there's having a bank of partnerships that we know we can go to. And the flip side of that is there are students that come to us and say, I would like to work here, and I've already talked to them, and I can. And then that joins the internship program as a company and individual and industry. Or I'd like to have that kind of an internship. Can you help me find one? Or I want to go to that particular business. Can you call and help me open the door there? So having 40 in the bank is not impacting our ability to give kids the opportunity to have an internship. All students who we are trying to set up for an internship that are ready to do one now, we're finding placements for. This is, we're just happy to have these new, or as I think you call them, recommitted internships, because it means we know we have places that we can count on taking interns. And many of our students are interested in the same sorts of industries, so it's nice to have the bank of places we can send them to. Healthcare is an example that we send a number of students to. For example, research, tech companies. So it's in our best interest and the students to have a bank of those types of partnerships.
And one thing to say, just to piggyback on that, so what we're also finding now is that, at least the expressed interest for some of the students in terms of what business sectors they want to go into, we had to really kind of do a lot more outreach. So we are seeing an uptick in students that want engineering, right? So trying to find the appropriate engineering firm, it's not an easy endeavor, but it's something that we're working toward, if that makes sense. So even if we don't have a secured placement for a student right now, that student is being communicated with, they know that we're on the hunt, and the second we can secure one, we call the kid down and saying, when can you start? So, all right. So any more questions on this? Because it's going to be an aspect that I'm going to cover in a future slide. All right. Oh, wait, no, you started. Oh, the 46 courses?
I don't think we need to speak to that. You all know, we've been working hard at college and career partnerships. I know you've seen that already, so.
And we've developed the district website as well. So what's next? We are expanding the internship opportunities in different sectors. So we've had a lot more outreach this year to HVAC companies, plumbing, the police department, barber shops, like sectors that really pay well, that students have an interest. So I've contacted three separate higher-end barber shops in Hartford, where, you know, so they could get that experience. HVAC companies, because of course, we know when something goes wrong in our homes, we call them, they're there for like 25 minutes, and they get paid a lot of money. So we're really trying to expand our reach and the opportunities that we can afford our kids. A lot of our kids wanted to do medical, you know, and I know that was, it was heavily concentrated with all our students doing medical internships. But we have journalism internships, you know, writing articles that's been published. So when I say we're really trying to get more and more opportunities for our kids and thinking outside the box, that's exactly what we're trying to do. But we're also keeping in mind that when we create these opportunities, we want to create them for all. So like one of our choice students, for example, wants to be an esthetician. So we were able to secure one in Avon that she could actually go to, you know. But it was working with that student individually to see, well, should we look for one closer to home, or are you okay with coming to Avon for it? She wanted to come here, and we were able to secure that. So this is the type of work that we're doing. And the goals that we're setting are always going to be student-driven. Okay? Do you want me to keep going on this?
Yeah, I think they've seen it, so we can.
Yep. So again, we want to create more opportunities for our students to enroll in college-level courses. That's something that I know is a priority for the district, and I had many conversations with Dr. Lockhart about this, so I know that's something that we're going to be working on as well. There was the research in pilot for additional methods of communication. So the dismissal manager, district apps, text messaging, for example. I know we have a meeting on the 30th with a company that I worked with in previous districts that really tailored communication. So we're looking at various options, because we know that's also one of the areas that we want to improve, communication with families. We want to find ways that we can communicate with families in their target language, because we all know language can be a barrier. So we're exploring those options. We're going to be revisiting ways of how we have open house, student conferences. We want to play around with ideas that want to make them more conducive to families. We're all educators, and one of the things that we complain about sometimes is having to go to our kids' events because they're very long. So we want to try to think about that and put ourselves in the shoes of parents and what would be, work best for them. And explore ways to highlight students' achievement. We want to be able to publicize the great things that our kids do, because they do phenomenal things in this district. So finding more opportunities to really kind of highlight that, because by highlighting those things, that also allows for parents and kids to feel more connected to school. That one kid that might be quiet in class, if we recognize that kid, that could change that kid's purview of school totally. You see me. And that's really what we want to kind of foster. So we're going to keep working on this, and of course, we'll provide you the necessary updates. Questions for me?
I got it.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. I was going to have, obviously, trying to make sure that we're all involved and we all have different facets of the work that we're specializing in, so to speak. So Susan, this is no affront to you. I just see what time it is, and I want to make sure that we keep things moving. And I know that the board knows 95% of what's on this slide already. So this is, our system's work, obviously, is about resources and making sure that we are using all of our resources to the best of our abilities to do what's best for students. And so some reiteration of what we are doing with your American Rescue Plan funds, ARPA, as they're known out there, some of the security upgrades that we've made, a lot of technology upgrades in the IT department. I think you're all pretty well aware of those, and go through this at your leisure. So what's next there? You heard me mention earlier tonight, we've got to complete this space enrollment study. We're going to work collaboratively, as we have every other year, to develop our budget. It's already that time, the documents have started coming. We have to monitor the budget closely. You've heard Susan say that at every meeting that we've been at so far this year. We're all seeing the results of inflation and shortages and so on. It's no different for us as a school district. So Susan and our administrators are working very closely together to make sure that we stay on budget. And we are continuing school safety and security training for all district staff, and we are working very closely with the Avon Police Department to do that. I know you don't have any other questions about that, so I'll do my best to get us to rest as quickly as possible. And thank you for your patience, board members and administrators and individuals who might be watching this later on on television. As you know, this is a lot of work that's being done, and it's hard to be able to share that in a succinct way in some ways. I mean, the majority of what we spoke about tonight is what I call our business. It's teaching and learning. And so we just wanted to make sure that as we started another year together, you as a board knew the progress that the district is making, the strategic plan that we've put together and revised over time. So I apologize for the lengthiness of that, but I think you have a good, big picture of where we are right now. We can certainly talk more about it at other times. Is it for me? I'm good. Oh, yes, sorry. I guess I do have an update that I forgot. So very quickly, you know, usually, the people aren't here now to hear me say it, but at least you'll all know it as the board. We had two individuals speak at public comment at our last board meeting, and as I usually do, followed up to be able to bring back information to you as the board. I met Mr. Farrell, you remember, spoke about wanting to name something at the high school room or the like on behalf of a previous music director who started a program here. Mr. Medick and I met with him, I believe, the week after the board meeting. And I had a good conversation with him about doing something different, but still valuable. So while we don't name wings and buildings typically after any individuals anymore as a town, there are still ways that we can recognize someone. So what we talked about was putting up a plaque either near the orchestra room, or we have a few ideas. We came out, Mr. Medick came out after our meeting and talked to Mr. Phylon here. You know, we have a lot of pieces out there already for coaches, for players, previous musicals and so on. And Mr. Farrell was very happy with that, thought the group would be very happy with that also. And so we will be getting back to him. We just finished our legwork there, and we'll be letting him know where the places are that we think we might be able to put it. He then, as you know, has a group that he's already working with on the outside of alumni and so on that are looking to help do this. And they'll fund whatever it is they'd like to put up, the plaque, the picture, what have you. One more step that I need to take, I think, before we move that forward as a whole, is I'd also like to talk to Mr. Donato and make sure that he wants the recognition to look like this. Because if we're going to put something here on someone's behalf, I want to make sure that they're comfortable with it too. And I have not spoken to him. So that will be, next, we will let Mr. Farrell know the spots that we have, and then I will ask about speaking to Mr. Donato, and we'll go from there. Just thought you might want to know that as a, by way of update. I think we came to a good resolution there. The parent who spoke here- The parent who spoke here tonight that also spoke at our last meeting, I had actually spoken to that parent before our last meeting and had a conversation around what the current board policy is related to cell phones and other electronics in the school, schoolsa, although this was focused more on the high school. And as you know, we revised that policy as a board very recently. That was done with the input of the board's attorney. And in the meantime, we also went through the pandemic with students doing remote learning and utilizing technology more than ever. So in short, I think that we revised the policy as a board and the regulations related to it as a district, in other words, the way that it's implemented, but we really haven't had much time to implement the policy the way that it looks now, because of the structure and being in and out during the pandemic and so on. We haven't had a straight period of time where we would have implemented it. You might remember, we had time, for one period of time, we had purchased slots for the students to put their cell phones in on the backs of the doors, then we couldn't do that because of pandemic, and they would have had to have been disinfected by the rules and so on, so that went by the wayside. So the long and the short of it is that the policy says that students will not utilize phones, except if they are allowed to by an adult in the building and/or during non-instructional time. So non-instructional time, they're sitting in the cafeteria, and they have their phone and they're listening to music, they're doing what they do on their phone. That has been allowed at the high school. They are, I was here and saw them doing it and talked to Dr. Lockhart about it. We had, I think it was a photography class, am I correct? One of our classes, we're learning how to take better photos with their phones, so they were using them for an actual instructional purpose, and they all did have one, and if they didn't, we had other technology for them to use. So I know that, I talked to the policy committee chair, Ms. Young, about this after the last meeting, whether or not we wanted to put it on the policy agenda to have a conversation. My understanding, generally speaking, is that we do not want to do that right now, but rather to let the current policy that has recently been revised stand and have the opportunity to actually work through it as a school district, and particularly at the high school, because that really is the only place where there's an actual question about it. And I see the two of you looking at me like, please, don't tell us, you're about to outlaw our cell phones, is that where this is going? It's not where this is going. The policy allows it in this regard. And, you know, if the board wants to have a different conversation, as you know, we have the board attorney coming, and we can talk through some other possibilities there if we decide to do that at the next policy meeting. But otherwise, at present, I know that's what I have explained to the parent that I spoke to that was here tonight, and I think he has spoken to some of you also, and I do understand where he's coming from. We all want students to be, or our children to be more responsible with their use of cell phones. But whether or not we are changing the policy, I think is a different matter. And that was all I had.
All right, thank you. Excellent work. This will set us up for greater conversations later. This is what we're all doing together, setting goals and working towards that. So thank you for breaking it down, I know it was lengthy, but it was worth it. Next is our consent calendar, approval of budget transfers. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff. A second?
Second.
All right, Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes unanimously. Next is old business, Portrait of the Graduate. Mr. Medick, is that yours?
It is, yes.
So I asked Mr. Medick to do this, because we already had high school come out and do this, as you might remember, I believe it was in April, but we did not vote on it as a board at the time. We had a lot going on that night at the meeting, and we were the recipients of the presentation and asked some questions, obviously, except for at least one new board member. So what's, I just want to set us up here before Roberto just goes through this quickly, because I think you've all seen it before tonight. The NEAS process requires this, and it requires a board vote on it. And so to be able to facilitate the high school moving forward, we needed to bring that here again tonight for discussion, if you feel there's a further need for discussion, but for the possibility of voting to approve Avon's Portrait of the Graduate, which I'll let you speak about, Mr. Medick.
Certainly, and I will try to be as succinct as possible, and Dr. Carmo and I will be able to answer any questions you may have. As Superintendent referenced, at a meeting in the spring, we had a wonderful presentation by Mrs. Jackman Lawler and Mrs. Lisa Berliner, two of our department coordinators, who are also our NEAS reaccreditation chairs here at the high school. This is the copy of the presentation that they gave to us, and at that time, they gave an overview of the New England Association of Schools and Colleges' decennial reaccreditation process, as well as giving an overview to the district's work in a multi-year process to craft the Portrait of the Graduate. As many of the board members recall, this work actually began in the 2018-2019 school year, and gained a lot of traction. And even while we were remote during the pandemic, we continued to engage with stakeholders regarding this. So dating back to 1819, the district worked with Dr. Jonathan Costa, who helped facilitate the review of mastery-based learning practices and research through our Curriculum and Professional Development Council, CPDC for short, we love our acronyms in the state of Connecticut, and Avon. Dr. Costa led the committee in that work in facilitating it, and as the CPDC started to unravel what mastery-based learning looks like and how it can be measured, also recognizing that it's a large component of the NEAS reaccreditation process. We continued that work in 1920, and as many of you recall, during the shutdown in 2020, we engaged on a virtual platform known as Thought Exchange to solicit feedback from students, parents, staff, and members of the community on what skills and attributes they felt were most essential for Avon High School, let me correct that, Avon Public School graduates to attain during their 13 years with us. So with community-wide feedback, our CPDC group went back and revised that and came up with the various skills and dispositions, as well as descriptors. Through that process, folks on CPDC, as well as our NEAS reaccreditation team at the high school and our department coordinator started to build school-wide rubrics that could assess these mastery-based learning components in both formal and informal assessments throughout a student's timeline. How we will go about assessing that is the next level of work that the high school is going to begin piloting. We have a plan in place to start to roll out the Portrait of the Graduate, not just to the high school community, but to the Avon community as a whole, as a purpose statement, along with our mission, vision, statement of beliefs, and blueprint for excellence. With that said, our team here at the high school is starting to look at what assessments we can utilize in our common assessments, as well as in each class. So how would a learning activity or lesson align itself to the Portrait of the Graduate, and how could students be assessed on the skills or the dispositions within this document? We plan to do that with our current ninth-grade class as a pilot this year, so that process will be presented by Dr. Lockhart and the team here to the parents to understand what this is, the document, and what we'll be assessing over their time in high school. Students will not be penalized for participating in the pilot. It will help us to redefine our rubrics and ensure that they're looking to assess the skills and dispositions accordingly. And to that end, will allow us to then begin to transition this into a more formal process, because as many of the board members recall, with the updates to the Connecticut graduation requirements, there is a mastery-based learning component. There's a lot of work that has to go on with this as well, because as our, many of our parents in the community know, we do standards-based grading at the elementary school. This is essentially a standards-based grading practice at the high school in conjunction with our normal grading practices. So our team here is doing this level of work at the high school, not for the purpose of NEAS, but to ensure that our students are reaching key skills and dispositions that our community as a whole believe graduates of our school district should have attained, or should have attained during their timeline class. So a key component of the NEAS reaccreditation process is that we have a portrait of a graduate for our district, and that we have a plan to implement it at the high school and at other points beyond. Mr. Jeanine and I will be working with our building administrators to see how the Portrait of the Graduate can also be presented in a pre-K through 8 setting to families, and how some of the learning mechanisms that we utilize in pre-K through 8 align themselves to this. So ideas such as student-led conferencing at the elementary schools, various capstone activities, internships, and the like, all ready to align themselves to this level of work. In addition, we recognize that not everybody likes seeing words on clear white paper, so we are working on a more visually appealing graphic that can make this a viable document for our community as a whole, and that we can begin to introduce families to as they enroll in pre-K and K. So we asked the board to give consideration in approving the Portrait of the Graduate, the skills and dispositions that are presented on the one-pager, and we look forward to bringing back a more polished, visually appealing document in the coming months, and this will be one of the first key steps in the NEAS reaccreditation process here. So if there are questions about the skills or dispositions, or anything that was presented earlier this year, Dr. Carmo and I are happy to answer it this time.
If there are no questions, I'm ready to make a motion. Need a motion? Unless there's a lot of questions, but I feel like we have seen this, but.
Yeah, the summary on page 59 is very clear.
So I don't know.
The summary on page 59 is the actual Portrait of the Graduate with the skills, dispositions, and the descriptors. The next level of how we would assess that is on the rubrics that Avon High School has created for assessments here.
Are there any questions? All right, so Jackie, you want to make a motion to approve the Portrait of the Graduate?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the Portrait of the Graduate for 2022.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Sentences? Passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Next is new business, First Policy 6146.12, Advanced Courses and Challenging Curriculum.
So I know we had a robust conversation about these policies at our policy committee meeting, and the majority of you were present, obviously, could not all participate, but were present to hear and see much of that be presented, and a couple of you who were unable to attend that have spoken to me in the meantime. So I know that for the most part, you don't have questions about this, so I won't belabor it. But put out that this first policy is required by law. This is a new statute passed as of July 1st, 2022, that requires boards of education to have a policy related to advanced courses and challenging curriculum, in which the, much like the presentation we gave tonight, the college-level courses are defined, and there is a process for ensuring that students can take those courses and that we work to allow as many students as possible to enroll in upper-level courses, which of course is one of our goals also. The majority of what is in this policy, if you look at the last of it on page 63, is our direct legal references from the Connecticut general statutes, from what was just passed by the legislature. This is the board's law firms' model policy for this. Nothing has been changed from it. The advice was not to change anything in it, because it is directly connected to the statute.
Thank you for answering my question in advance. You know, I always ask it.
Are there any questions?
So are we going to do these one motion at a time?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, as I should have said right up front. They're on the agenda as a first read, and that had been long, has been longstanding practice, that we put the policies on for a first read if the entire board has not seen them. However, I think it's a little bit confusing, because there are times like this, what I'm about to do, and we've done this before, where I ask that the board forego, if possible, the second read, because this one, for example, is required by law, and it's been required since July 1st. So if the board is amenable, moving forward, when we're going to do that, I'd like to make the, put it on the agenda that we're asking that.
I agree.
Unless anybody has an issue with that.
Put it on the agenda that you're just.
The board agenda.
With possible actions.
Not a first read.
Well, it's a first read, but we're going to vote. But that we're voting on a first read, like asterisks or something?
Right, yeah, that's something that denotes that, if possible, we'd like a vote on it, even though it's a first read. And you, as you know, as a board, when we do ask that, we've done a lot of legwork getting you the documents in advance and discussing it at the policy committee meeting, so that it's easier to be done here. Also don't want public to think that you're, we have a document in front of you that you've never seen before, that you're about to possibly vote on, because we've done quite a bit of work before this through committee. So this one, there are, there are, there's one on for deletion tonight that we will not touch, I don't think, because I would recommend that the related, the privacy one, we do leave on the agenda as a first read, but we'll get there. So I just, as we get to each policy, I'll let you know, but this is one that we were hoping to vote on tonight.
Okay, so Jeff's question was answered. Anyone else have a question? Laura, would you like to make the motion?
So through the chair, I would like to make a motion that Policy 6146.12, Advanced Courses and Challenging Curriculum, be adopted as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Lisa, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Sentences? Nope, passes unanimously. Next is Policy 6146.1, Basis for Grading.
So the changes here are very minimal. I know that was a little bit difficult to see if you hadn't been at the meeting and you were looking through the red line, because the first few pages are completely struck through, starting with page 64 in our packet, but that's because, as you see, it starts with, ending with the class of 2018, and clearly, that's not relevant anymore, so the class of 2018 information and the class of 2019 information has been struck through via red line. The actual, I'll say substantive change is not that substantive, but it's on page 66, which is where the new policy actually would begin, having struck through all the previous class languages. And you see in red, it references the Board's Policy Addressing Enrollment in an Advanced Course or Program and Challenging Curriculum. That's the policy you just voted on, that you have to have as a board now. So it had to be referenced in our grading policy, and the statute also requires that our grading policy is defined in this way now. We were ahead of the curve for some districts in Avon, because as you see, we already had this policy defined. We don't have other changes to the existing policy. I did mention that there was a conversation around class rank, also as a part of student records. Our policy, the way that this is written, is okay, is in alignment with the way the law is. So we don't have to worry, I know that was one last-minute conversation and question at the policy committee meeting, and I double-checked on it even on the way to the meeting tonight after finally connecting with the board attorney. So the recommendation still is the policy as it is in front of you tonight.
Any questions? All right, go ahead, Laura.
All right, so then, through the chair, I would like to make a motion that Policy 6146.1, Basis for Grading, be adopted as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I saw Lindsey's hand went up there, so I'll just write it on Lindsey, but thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That looks unanimous to me. All right, next is Student Privacy, Policy 5125.1.
So this is one that I think, given the complexity of and the extent of, because it is a policy with various categories within it related to student privacy, it's a lot to absorb at once, even after having the conversation at the policy meeting that most of you attended, and some of the conversations since. There's no issue for us as a school district with this policy not being approved at present, because this is an example of, the law is the law, and this policy is the law. So what's here related to student privacy and student parent notifications and so on is what we follow, and we will follow it up until you approve the policy, and it will continue. So what I would say about this one is to take more time to make sure that you've had enough time to look at it, in case you have any other questions, because I know I took a couple of last-minute ones even today, this afternoon before the meeting. So I think we can put this on the agenda again next time for a second read. If there's any questions right now that maybe you had, but otherwise, I think this one deserves a second read. And that said, that means we will not take any action on the next one, because this policy would replace the student survey policy, because student surveys are within the privacy policy, because obviously, it's an inherent piece of it, so they're all housed in one policy now.
Okay, so any initial questions? And we'll just move them both forward to the October meeting. Okay, so next is Policy 6146. Okay, so next is policy 6161, selection of educational materials.
This policy came up in the spring, both because I believe some of you were at a Cabe meeting where this policy was talked about, and whether or not districts had one, and we did have one. And also, remember, as we discussed, curricular exemptions, so things such as dissection of animals and certain family life exemptions that exist, that in that policy, this policy was referenced. And so as we went through that process, I pulled this one out and went through it and asked the attorney to go through it also in light of more current laws and regulations, because you can see this one was adopted in 2013. So the updates that are here is actually only two. One is to refer to you as, quote, "the board," as a abbreviation, and the other is a red-lined sentence on page 80. And that sentence is the exact sentence from the legislation that was passed, which is that, I think it's the 10-18A on the bottom. So our policies remained intact. The attorney just added the current necessary language from the statute.
So is this one we're passing?
So I would ask that this one be voted on, because that is one small change and it's necessary legally to make that change.
Any questions? All right, Laura.
Through the chair, I would like to make a motion that policy 6161, selection of educational materials, be adopted as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next, the bus contract extension and amendment.
I think we talked quite about this one also, so Susan, maybe just if they have question, overall, if they have questions.
Yes, this came up in our finance committee. Anybody have any pressing questions from the packet? So basic synopsis, maybe just for viewing audience to know.
Great. Synopsis is, given the current environment, inflation, and the way the industry right now is, current negotiations for contracts that are going out to full RFP are coming back very high, percentages increases, and to even try to obtain a new bus and go with a new bus company, have them ordered, is probably 18 months minimum out. And given the new legislation concerning electric buses, that's on the, in the hopper, we discussed that at length at our meeting as well. Best recommendation I have is to renew with the current vendor right now. We have a very good working relationship with. We've got a very favorable contract extension. Work with them and then work on a full RFP at the end of this contract to look to see what options are for electric buses as that legislation gets passed, for grants are available and more guidance is available, quite frankly, more opportunities, and hopefully the technology for those would be available for us to buy them. So we're able to fiscally buy them. Right now, we couldn't, even if we wanted to, they're too expensive. So at this point, this is the best offer I think the board's going to get, and I do recommend that. And the rate is very favorable.
Just for the record, this contract would end?
In 20, what's the extension?
Twenty.
2029.
So at that point, we would go out to RFP, depending on what the legislation is, the guidance is?
Correct. Sometime in fiscal year 27, '28, we'd go out for RFP, and that would give us the enough timeframe to work through the whole next year with a new vendor to then go into the following year.
And if the legislation changed in the meantime, we would be able to make a change and go out to RFP. We're not locked into a contract if legislation about what you need to do changes.
Correct.
I know we've had some questions about electric buses and that sort of thing, so.
Excellent. Any questions? All right, so you're looking for us to approve this, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, so I will make the motion to approve the bus contract extension and the amendment. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, thank you, Sage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously as well. Okay, next is our 22-23 fee schedule.
Thank you. The highlights of this is there's almost no change to the fee schedule. We talked again at the finance committee and not changing the, not changing the lunch prices or the breakfast prices this year, given that we still are in a free environment and we're not sure what the legislation is going to be, how long the money's going to last, and that we take a hard look at our financials for the food service program once we go back into a paid setting and evaluate for next year what those prices should be to make sure we are at least break even, if not profitable, in the following year when we aren't fully paid. The same with preschool's tuition. Mrs. Fox and I have had conversations regarding taking a look again at this program as we build the budget for fiscal year 23, '24, evaluating what that tuition cost should be. The technology protection plan, this is only the second year we're in it, we're going to keep that flat. The only thing we made changes to was the custodial hourly rate to ensure that encompasses the highest to lowest-paid employees and so the district's not losing any money on those rentals.
Any questions?
I did have a question. There was an item that was $515.12, an office conference room monitor at AHS. I just want to know what that is.
I'm sorry, Lisa, where are you seeing?
It was on page two of the board of finance in the packet that you sent us home.
The finance committee?
Yeah. I'm just curious as to what that is.
Can I get it back to you? I don't even know. Yes, let me get that.
You can get back to me on that.
I don't even have that in front of me, so I need to see what was sent out there that I missed.
I don't have it in front of me, but what was the dollar amount again?
It was $515.12 for an office conference room monitor at AHS.
I believe I know what that is, but I see Mrs. Ferry nodding at me, too. And if the board doesn't mind, Mrs. Ferry, do you want to answer, because I know yours will be accurate, mine might be half-accurate.
In many of our conference rooms in the past, we had smart boards projected, used to project for meetings and such. The high school has never had a board in their conference room. And so what is the trend now? What's the, I don't want to say the more economical option, is to get a flat-screen monitor or television to them project on as well. And so that is what the purchase was for as well.
I see. Okay, thank you. I was thinking a monitor of something else. And I was like, why do we need a monitor in there? Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? Lynn, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to move that we accept the fee schedule as presented.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Liz, thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Do we have any more communication from the public?
No.
Okay, communication from Avon Board of Education members, anyone?
I just quickly, very quickly, I know it's been acknowledged already this evening, but I am a Lion member on behalf of the Lions. I wanted to thank the school district again for all their participation in the Hometown Hero Dinner and the events of the day. The school not only participated from a musical standpoint, but the overwhelming thank you notes that were received for the Hometown Heroes was incredible. And I just want you to know that they are on display at the fire department currently, and they will be moving to the police department after that. So, and they were all very touched by them. And really, if you have opportunity at some point or another to see it, it was incredible. We made this big wall and all of the kids really did a great job. And there were some very, very well-written thank yous from, obviously, the older population, but the younger students, just one was cuter than the other. And so I just wanted to thank everybody for doing that. I know it was a time crunch at the beginning of the year, so I appreciate, and the Lions appreciate everything that was done for that. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else?
I just want to say, really, Bridget, what we saw tonight was so important and I think so valuable to our students. And I'm really so excited and looking forward to hearing how it goes. And I appreciate you sharing the great information and really having empathy and concern about those, you know, those pods of kids that are struggling. And I just, I'm grateful and really excited to see where these initiatives take us. And I just wanted to really share my appreciation for that.
Thank you, Jackie. Laura?
Just shout out, if anybody saw the patch today, niche.com has ranked Avon High School number six in the state and the all the highest school outside of North Carolina. In the top 10. Go Avon High School.
Excellent.
I just wanted to say thank you for having me be a part of this process. I'm very much looking forward to it. Very grateful to see new faces that are coming into Avon. As a previous K through 12 Avon student myself, it's just nice to see how APS has transitioned over the years, and I'm very, very happy to be here. So thanks for having me.
Welcome, Sarah. Anyone else?
Through the chair, I apologize, Sarah. I was so intent on getting into the work that we brought here tonight, I didn't officially welcome you, even though we already met.
You did.
Thank you. We met before the board meeting to go through things, but occurred to me that you haven't always been sitting here.
It feels like she's been.
It feels like it. After a night like tonight, it feels like, yes.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none. Anybody move to adjourn?
I do.
All right, Jackie, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, Laura, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
[inaudible].